Thank you. I've got a couple of questions and I, the first one is, and I think this has been worded slightly differently than I expected because there is actually $410,000 in a few years' time for Moskew Tari, which is a small amount, but I'm just wondering.
I didn't use it because I said that was an underspend.
I said that this was money that would have otherwise been in. But the 410 hasn't been taken out for this because of the way it's been written. Is that correct? Yeah. But it should be included. These figures do not take into account also the 350,000 that, this total quantum includes actually the 350 that we've already budgeted towards us. So that's another, that would be 700 that should be reduced down from this figure, I believe. Was actually 760,000?
There will be a proportion of those costs that will not be within that figure, but yes.
So I just, and so I'm just going to say that since it's one o'clock and since I think there was some lack of clarity about those maximum numbers and what they look like, I don't want to vote on this without having a, some budget advice on what it's going to look like on our long-term plan. And I'm just wondering, is there any chance that we can get those figures after adjournment for lunch?
I wonder whether it needs to be taken to that extent. What we have put in here is a maximum. That maximum, I would assume, includes the expenditure that we've got, but Mr. Mackenzie, do you have a viewpoint?
So the accounting standards talk about project costs only being those that once you have approved the project. So the work that they're planning on doing in the next financial year would not be deemed capital project costs, so therefore that $300,000 would not be deemed capital. So the build cost is then effectively, or the maximum build cost is that 17.5 million that's up on the board.
But my understanding is that in coming to that figure, it did include that 350,000. And that's the problem is that I think we're working on two different assumptions, that figure was the total including any planning work, but I'm, I've obviously, I'm, we may be hearing different things.
There will be some of the work that is done that once a decision is made, if a decision is made to progress, that we can, that we can capitalise, however, that will be after it. I'd just like to respond to, it's, yes, that these figures are presented from the staff and as with all capital figures at this point in time, we're talking about concept figures. And just to respond to the, that the trust is now only raising 42%, that that's not entirely true because this is not the final figure, there's a lot of water to go under the bridge to determine what the final design is going to be and the cost and the impact on the operational cost. The trust has committed to raising a substantial portion towards an aspirational facility. And as the Chair of the Trust did mention, there is, there are differences in the numbers, but there's a lot of work for us to do to confirm these final numbers. These numbers are, at the end of the day, an indication of the potential envelope for a four-pull facility at this time.
That leaves, the other question though, is what it looks like on the line, the effect of adding the second part of the motion to the annual, those, the year and the debt and whether, because that obviously, well, confirmation first, that will hit, go over the, put us over the...
As advised earlier, we've got $7 million buffer currently in there. You're increasing your debt by $10 million, which means you're going to be at 233.
So the question is, does that require cognizant in this motion that we're doing that because, in buying doing this, because that opens up another whole debate.
Well, it doesn't have to be in the motion, you just need to be aware of the impact of the decision that you're making. So you'll have to do a subsequent follow-on, you'll be making a decision that means that you are knowingly in breach of the end point of your financial strategy with regard to debt repayment.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm aware of that. I'm, A, nervous that we haven't got the Chair of Finance here because I think he will be informed. I'm also concerned that people are hanging their hat on this vote, saying that other things are going to happen, but not putting it in as part of that resolution. And that's what's causing me concern because it's fine to say this because we can do X, Y and Z, but I think that I am going to feel very uncomfortable by putting 10 million there if we're not taking action to address that and to resolve that this can only be done by us if we keep below that point. I understand the nervousness, I understand how keen people are for this project, but I want to see that we're addressing that and that this isn't just put in and we are going to push that bubble. And I, I've heard a number of us say that this because we're going to do something X, Y and Z, but I don't know what that X, Y and Z, and there is nothing here at the moment talking to me about us doing that X, Y and Z. And I would feel, and I'm just asking the mover, is he prepared to look at an addition, and maybe it needs an adjournment to do it, to say that staff work along that line to ensure that we can get to look at X, Y and Z to get, that we do this but with, stay within that policy?
I'd be happy, but I don't know that any of us, including Mr. Mackenzie, at this stage can say we can fix the three and a half million dollars today because we know what's going to fix it. If, if, if there is a real concern, then clearly what would have to happen is the 10 million would have to drop to six and a half. And then it's a question of whether, as a council, we are prepared to work with that figure.
I suppose what I'm saying is, I don't expect that answer now. I'm thinking that there needs to be another part to this, that staff be asked to find those savings.
I'm happy to speak to it.
Yeah.
Okay, two things. The trusts have come to us with a fairly ask, no, no, no. This was a question about whether I'd put another line in. She asked, would the mover be prepared to do that? So do you want me to answer that or not? Yep, okay, so the question is, I'm happy to have a line in that says something along the lines, Ruth could probably word it up, but to the effect that, that we'll work with council staff to make sure that we don't, that, or council staff will keep us informed and make sure that we don't breach our cap. How would you say it?
Mr. Chairman, on the front page of the report, the recommendation which talks, in the report, it talks about the various options to generate some revenue to help offset additional capital costs. And the recommendation says, notes the information on the funding options for the new aquatic facility in Moskew. I'm not sure whether that's, that's explicit enough to satisfy councillor Wilson, but certainly in the report, it talks about the various surplus property sales, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, does that help?
I, I think these things are really easy to say yes to and not, except for we have got constraints that we've put on ourselves and they have to address those constraints. Now, it could have been the lights yesterday that put us over, it could be other things that are still in there that are going to push us over, but I'm...
Councillor Wilson, are you speaking? This is drifting away into debate.
Well, can I move, could I move in a moment?
Could we adjourn now and let, yeah, can we, councillor Wilson try and sort something out with councillor Lord over the break?
Yeah.
I just get, I get frustrated by the fact that we get through, well over halfway through councillors having the opportunity to debate and then we change the resolutions. So I'm prepared to adjourn for lunch while that is done on the condition that councillors have done their thinking and that there will be no further changes to the resolutions when we come back because it just makes the debate very difficult for councillors who've already spoken. Are we comfortable?
All that, any things they want to change over the comeback at the beginning of the afternoon?
If you're going to change anything, get the words sorted out over the lunch break and hopefully we'll get away to a clean start afterwards.
I understand that far too much fun was had while I was away, but I'm back. I also have been recently, just for all of your information, I've been recently equipped in my lunch break with brand-new hearing aids, so I shall now be able to hear what is simultaneously being whispered in each side of councillor Thompson's ears from here. Now councillor Lord, you have an announcement to make, as I understand it.
Yes, yes, expecting a new addition to the, no. Look, in the lunchtime break, after some discussion, we, I was aware of the problem that we were going to have with, the motion as it stood was going to be problematic for our self-imposed debt limit for 2021 that we have consulted on. And so with the permission of the Secondar, I'd like to withdraw that motion and I've got a new motion if the council would agree to that.
All those in favour of accepting the withdrawal of the resolution, please say aye. Against, carried. Okay. Now, I'll invite you to put your new motion.
Well, I think it's going to come up on the screen. Want me to read it? In the meantime, the council includes... You lost it, Wendy. Okay, so council includes in the long-term plan a placeholder of 6 million in the 1819 for new aquatic facilities at Moskew, noting that staff will work closely with the staff, Tari Community Facilities Trust. Also, they'll report back concept design options and costs by 30th of October this year to council, report back developed design options and costs by 30th of April 2016. Council confirms that the capital expenditure on new aquatic facilities in Moskew is subject to the Tari Community Facilities Trust achieving a fundraising target of seven and a half million. I don't, I don't think I really need to now, I'll just take questions if anyone wants to vote, that's all right.
The seven and a half million fundraising target to be achieved is, when you say it's achieved, is it going to be in the form of promissory notes, is it going to be money in the bank, is it going to include the amount of money that we are providing to actually fund the fundraising?
It depends exactly when the target will be cash on hand, but it will also be possibly some pledges. Some people may pledge to give a certain amount over a period of years, but the ultimate fundraising will be cash.
So you're saying that the fundraising target of seven and a half million is not cash in the bank but may include pledges over a period of years?
We won't be asking council for the money till they've secured their funds.
But I'm talking about the secured funds and what you consider to be secured. Do you, do you consider that pledges over a period of years are secured funds or do you consider money in the bank to be secured funds?
If I could assist councillor, noting that there are a, noting that there are a number of decision points to be made between now and the construction of any new facilities, the form of the fundraising, the dates that it's due, et cetera, could all be considered at those, those points in time. I understood from the councillor that his intention with that resolution was merely to set the ground, set the principle that any new facilities would be developed at a point in time when there was a fundraising target achieved, and the, the wherewithal the details around that will be developed as the project is developed.
So from what I understand of what Ms. Stokes says, we're going to be voting now on a target of 7.5 million, but how that is achieved is going to be decided later? Is that what you're saying? And whether it's actually achieved in cash or in promissory notes?
My understanding is that what it says is not that. What it says is we won't spend any money on capital until the trust has raised the money.
Yes, but raised it as actual cash or raised it as promises of cash? There's a big difference, we've seen that with the stadium.
It'd be raised, it raised in the way that would be conventionally accepted from a fundraising effort of this kind, which is public and transparent, which is different from the way the County Ritz Park Stadium trusted it.
Would it be possible to define somehow what that is? Because I don't believe that there is any conventional definition on what is an achieved fundraising target.
No, the answer is no. If you don't choose to accept that, that's right, that's fine, vote against it, but I'm, I don't think it's reasonable to expect everyone to go into such detail now with something that's not going to be spent for four years anyway.
Well, Irene is here, she could speak to it, but simply, council won't spend any money, as you rightly pointed out, until their target has been achieved.
But what's achieved mean?
Achieved means got, ready to spend. What it may mean that there's stages along the way where some promissory notes are taken.
So promised as opposed to achieved?
No, so when you read that, it says council confirms that the capital expenditure is subject to the Tari Community Facilities Trust achieving a fundraising target of 7.5 million. Now, achieved means having achieved it. That's what it means.
In a position to give it to us.
Being in a position to give it to us. We're spendable.
So money in the bank then, not promises?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just note that this, much more as the motion has significantly improved, the clarity around a trigger has removed and there's no council approval, even an agreement with, as there was at the end of the other one. Remember, we added with, just a sign-off. I mean, under the terms of that motion, the moment that funding was achieved, bang, the project goes. And I don't think, I think the final sign-off has to be with this authority, given that it's where the exposure lies. And so I'd like to see a qualification at the end that's also subject to a final approval by council, which was in the previous one and is now gone.
Do you want to comment on that, Ms. Stokes? Because it sounds to me, looks to me, as if it, it isn't triggered the moment they get the 7.5 million, it's not triggered till 2018, 19 anyway, because that's where the capital is.
Yes, so the intention with the report back is, both the report backs are that that would be a report back to, to council and under B, that a preferred concept design would then be progressed through to C, and then at C, council would be making a decision whether to go or not to go.
I'm not, I'm sorry, I don't want to overthink it because I think too many of us have done that already, but that's not what it says. It says that we're confirming that the capital expenditure is subject to the trust achieving the target of 7.5. So if they get there, sorry, the money's confirmed.
And, and council's final approval.
Not what it says.
No, I'm offering some words.
Order! Can I suggest that you frame an amendment?
Yeah, just a question on the timing and may, maybe the General Manager could help us with that. Just note that we've got developed design options at the end of April 16, but our placeholder expenditure nears 1819. So that, and those, that assumes that the build can begin, does it, before, before 1819 and that our money would kick in after the raising of funds? I'm just trying to get a sequence for, for the expenditure versus the build.
Yes, so the final phasing of the expenditure will obviously be determined when council decided which option that it would like to progress with, if any. The, the idea to progress at this point is to go back to the earlier discussion that in order to maintain momentum and to get something reasonably concrete that the trust can start their fundraising on, is that that design would progress now. And we would envisage that at the April report back to council for confirmation, that the timing and the exact spend, et cetera, would be covered in that, at that point.
Further speakers? Okay, I'll wait.
My member turns the last full stop into a comma and adds the words, "and final DCC approval of the project."
Do you mean council?
DCC thought meant Dunedin City Council.
Might mean the staff, might mean us.
Wouldn't have thought so.
Council approval. This can be, this can be progressed as an amendment, but formally or given that it's one phrase, you're happy to, right. So it's included now. Now...
Ms. Stokes is just telling me that it does need to be cancelled because DCC is the organisation.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Now, I note that the three previous people who have spoken have asked questions, so we're now in formal debate. I don't want any more questions, I don't want any more changes, please, let's debate what's there and make a call on. So, I call for speakers.
Thank you, Bishop. Look, I think that this is a much more realistic figure than the previous motion incorporated, but I do think that it poses a little bit of a difficulty in the sense that the trust has previously said that it will accept nothing less than a four-pull option if it is to contribute 7.5 million. And the indication in this, the indication that staff have given us is that with a $6 million contribution from us, that would be, well, it is quite likely that that would not be enough to complete what the trust has previously said is their bottom line if they are to contribute to the fundraising. So I think that this motion has some difficulties associated with it. I think, given that the council has previously voted in principle to support a new facility, it would be difficult for me to vote against this because I think that if that is indeed this council's decision, then it is necessary for us to have some figure in the budget. And I think that this figure is more realistic, however, and the timing is more realistic than the previous motion. However, I think that this does give some indication to the trust perhaps and to the community about the realities that we're facing in budgetary terms and perhaps sets a slightly more realistic framework for discussion about what is able to be achieved. I'm not enjoying being the bad cop in this discussion, but I, I think a little bit of reality is important in this, in this conversation and, and certainly if we have any desires to put money into anything else over the next 10 years without substantially increasing rates or amending our financial strategy, then reality is what is required.
Councillor McTavish has said that this is a more realistic figure. It's just a smaller figure of what is equally unrealistic. There is no money. What isn't addressed here, apart from a definition of achieving, which I would still like to have and I don't believe I've had, is who is going to pay for the extra $4 million to actually build this project when the Tari Community Facilities Trust come up with their seven and a half million, we come up with our six, and we're still $4 million short? Where's that going to come from? Has anyone thought about it? Doesn't look like they have, it's certainly not anticipated there. We've got the other problem. The other problem being that the reason it's 6 million is not because we need or see value in 6 million. The reason it's 6 million is because if it was a million more, we would be again outside our own envelope of what's allowed. So this here isn't a, a recommendation or a motion which says we see value of $6 million in this project. This recommendation is saying that we think we can push the boat out another $6 million and not look completely stupid doing it. And this is, quite frankly, in itself a bit of a fond hope. So there's no chance that we're going to see where the extra $4 million is to complete the project, that's before the project escalates as they all have in the past. There's also no consideration of the fact that this 6 million proposed pushes the boat out as far as we possibly can and means that we really can't kick the can down the road for anything else at all. I mean, you've got your cricket lights, maybe. You've got your pool, South Dunedin Library can go hang for another, how many years? We don't know. We've got a situation here where this isn't a motion for the pool, so much as a motion to spend every last cent that currently exists in a budget which was unrealistic in terms of our ability to pay the interest rates anyway. The questions remain, where's the extra $4 million coming from for the as-yet-to-be-escalated price of building this thing? Where's it coming from? Nobody here has an answer. Who is going to then turn around and reject every other single possible bit of spending that we might have because we've already spent up to the limit? Councillor Lord's motion is a spend-to-the-limit motion on his patch and I can't vote for it.
The speakers. Okay, I can support this motion. I take on board the fact that, as has been alluded, this pushes us to the limit. I also am conscious of the fact that over the last few years, we have achieved considerable efficiencies and underspends that have given us other options. My only reservation is that we, and I'm pleased we didn't have to go there because I couldn't have supported it, is that we're not shoving something, displacing something else for this. Councillor Van Devis mentions the South Dunedin complex. There was talk at one stage of, and we'll put that aside and do this, I'm absolutely delighted that that is not the way that's proposed to do this. I see the discussions through the design and concept stages, at least partially being designed to look for efficiencies, look for savings, look for clever ways of doing things, look for ways of providing the service that the Moskew community has been asking for in ways that perhaps don't cost quite as much in any case. So, as I say, I can support this because I think this is as prudent a way forward given our aspirations as is possible. Councillor Lord, would you want to exercise your right of reply?
No, I'm happy to just vote, but I support it, obviously.
All right. I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye. There's been a division called for.
Councillor Benson Pope. Councillor Kelbert.
Aye.
Councillor Holden.
Aye.
Councillor Lord.
Aye.
Councillor McTavish.
Aye.
Councillor Noe.
Aye.
Councillor Pete.
Aye.
Councillor Staines.
Aye.
Councillor Thompson.
Aye.
Councillor Van Devis.
Aye.
Councillor Wilson.
Aye.
You wish it.
Aye.
Okay, carry on. Well done.
All right, I'm now moving on to the, there's an item on the...
there's an item on the, oh yes, we're here. There's a, there was an item on, hang on, where's the item?
your worship. your worship. Sorry, I just wondered whether there is, or there was somewhere, a paper relating to potential funding options for, for what? For the pool. And it would probably make sense to do them in tandem. Thirteen. I mean, it's fine if you feel that it's all been covered, but we haven't, as such, discussed.
I'd be happy to move a motion noting that that will form part of the next phase of this project.
Okay, sorry. So the, the motion is that council notes the information on the funding options for the new aquatic facility in Moskell. It's been moved councillor Calvert, second to councillor Noon, is there any discussion? There isn't any, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye. Against? Carried. Now, I'd like to go on to item twenty. The ticketing arrangements for the Dunedin Centre revenue replacement options. Welcome to the table, chief. And we are doing this in this order because the chief will not be here tomorrow. And she's answering, any questions? In the best position to answer any questions on. Twenty, yeah. So, in the first instance councillor's questions. Right, well I'll take that on board. And as a second of it, any questions in the first instance, councillor McTavish?
I'm still catching up with which one we're doing.
Number twenty, the region.
Okay. So I just need to ask and ensure that it's on the record. There has been, I've received an email from a cultural institution that is, that regularly uses the town hall and was just seeking clarity about whether or not this change will impact at all on their, on the ticketing arrangements and costs associated with ticketing in the use of the town hall.
No, it will not. So arrangements between DVML and the, the prices they charge for use of the town hall and for tickets are completely independent of this arrangement. This is about who takes the, the flow-through cut from the ticketing agency, who makes the profit effectively and who does the work.
Further speakers? councillor Van Devis.
So I just have a question, and that is regarding the options, which option would allow me to vote against DVML taking over this ticketing operation and leaving the status quo?
There is no option that allows that, this is a staffing level delegation. So staff have already written to, to the regent saying that we are withdrawing from the MOU, that this has been coming for some three or four years and should in fact have been sorted at the time that DVML were handed the Dunedin Centre to manage. This should have been rescinded at that time, but it wasn't. So DV, so the regent have already been told that the arrangement, the MOU, which is a staffing delegation, has been rescinded. The question here is, do you want to take money out of DVML's budget in order to compensate the regent for their anticipated loss of revenue?
The question I have, and I believe it's a question that all public representatives should have the ability to vote on, is whether we agree with staff making this plainly political decision on our behalf.
So just to be clear, the original decision to grant the MOU was made by staff. It was made by staff in discussing, with staff who were here at the time. It was made in order to effectively increase the size of the grant to the regent, but without that being done in a public and transparent way. So in discussions amongst the staff, that was considered. And the other thing that was, and the, the MOU was written and given no end date. So, so the legal advice was the MOU had to be sorted anyway. What, so the discussion that was had with the staff is, given that, that there had been through three subsequent chief executives of DVML, the arrangement was unworkable. And after several attempts to try and patch it or make it workable, it was agreed that it was not going to be workable. The other thing that was taken into consideration was that if this arrangement was the other way round, which is that DVML took a slice out of the regent's activities with the regent having no say over it, we would patiently say that was unfair and not transparent and we would end it. So we treated, we treated the regent and DVML the same way as we would do if it was the other way around. So this was a staffing MOU that was entered into the first place and it was considered that it was a staffing decision to give them intention to, to end that MOU. If you want to move a motion to, that councillors wish to re-enter into a new MOU of the same type, then you're welcome to do so.
I would have thought that should have been one of the options in the report, but just to continue, questions? You've said that the MOU had no end date. Does that not simply imply that in fact that MOU stands in perpetuity?
No, legal advice is that no MOU with no end date would ever be enforceable in law and that we had to give a suitable period of notification to the regent of the intent to exit the MOU. More than six months' notice was given, that is after at least a couple of years of earlier discussions, that it was likely to be coming to an end.
The MOU that the city council has with Maori, I believe, also has no end date. Does that mean that the MOU that we have with Maori is also not enforceable?
The chief executive doesn't have to answer that, it's not on the point at all. Ask questions that are relevant, please.
It relates to the legality of MOUs and the chief has just stated.
She's just had advice on that, so please ask your next question.
Would, under the new arrangement, the public see a change in how they were able to book tickets? I.e. would they no longer be going to the regent dealing with similar stuff?
That will be over to the regent and DVML to arrange shared ticketing if that's what they care to do. My understanding is that that has been discussed. But that would be the same way as it is.
Do you not consider, through the chair, do you not consider that it is, that a decision over booking virtually all of the major function areas in Dunedin, where they're booked, where people are supposed to go, that that is a decision that has political implications and is a decision that councillors should have the ability to decide on?
No, I would consider that to be an operational measure.
Blimey. Speakers? There being none, I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye. Against? Carried. At this point, I think, if you recall, we laid the item on food resilience on the table the other day. But I'm just conscious of the fact that I'm jumping around here and I'm not necessarily taking into account which staff are available to things, so. Hey, how did that happen? Yeah, but I'm wearing them, they're not. So councillors, we'll return to, welcome, we'll return to item seventeen. And I had a lost, my memory's at a loss as to know exactly where we left it, but. Right, there's a resolution up, I'm lively informed. Right, thank you. My understanding is that this has been moved by councillor Staines, but it requires a second. You're happy to second? So, it's moved councillor Staines, second to councillor McTavish.
Your worship, if I, if I may, I've just, I've also asked that John Christie if he's available just to come over because this tags it to the Enterprise Dunedin budget and it might be useful to have him here for any questions. He's happy, okay.
Okay, so you're content with that? Okay. councillor Noon, ask a question?
I've just got a question, thank you. It's for miss Stokes. And it's just around what we're currently doing within the Parks and Reserves area in terms of identifying available land that could assist groups who want to achieve food resilience in a, in the, in the community. So just wanting to understand what's being done now, what can be done within existing budgets in that area.
Yes, the processes for people coming to us with requests for community gardens etc have been reviewed and there's certainly capacity within the Parks offices currently to be able to assist those initiatives. And we'll also be looking at opportunities for greater volunteer coordination being out of existing resource.
Follow that up, your worship. I can support A and B but not C, so can I ask for, for you to entertain the idea of taking them separately? Thank you.
councillor Calvert.
I'm presuming from C that when it, when it says enable the food resilience work to be carried out, that all that's saying is that the food resilience 0.5 of a coordinator will be in the middle of Enterprise Dunedin and will do what they're doing there without no further funds. Because this is 39,434, which is the cost of a 0.5 officer. So is this intended to be us providing a 0.5 food resilience person within Enterprise Dunedin?
The answer to that, the answer to that is yes.
Can I just add to that? I think the mover in the second that yesterday, in developing the wording of this motion, took on board the feedback councillor Calvert that you have offered in the last couple of days around not directing the employment of an individual but rather providing the budget to, to assist with a particular project and leaving it in the hands of the project deliverers, i.e. the staff, as to how that budget is apportioned. But it is correct that this is the cost that was provided to us when we asked for how much it would cost to deliver that project plan, the initial steps in that project plan, without the research component.
So, is councillor Staines right that it is to provide a half-time person under Enterprise Dunedin to carry out this work?
The intent is that it will provide the resource. Whether that is someone in the current team who is assigned to it or not is operational. So the aim here is to have that resource available and to get some activities underway.
So the, the food resilience work, is that the food resilience work in, somewhere in this report here, or is it? I presume it's a particular body of work and it's something in here minus these two research projects?
The work, it's the work that is noted under the recommended plan of action on page eighteen and it's the, the short term, 2015 to 2016, minus the research work.
So would it intend to include any further, I'm trying, I'll just say it this way, but I don't mean it to be particularly political, but political lobbying in the food area such as the two suggestions you made earlier of something you'd been doing? For example, lobbying about the hospital kitchen move or lobbying New World in Port Chalmers? I don't, lobbying's probably too strong a word, but would it include that sort of work?
I can't answer that, I'm not sure.
I think, I think that would probably be an aspect of it because I think we've seen that's what's happened, having Patricia in post over the last six months. So I'd imagine that there would be some oversight of big changes in Dunedin and on the food front.
Is there any chance that we would be able to know any more about that sort of work done, done on our behalf within our council? Because it sort of concerns me a wee bit that people, our people might be doing those sorts of things without us even. I'm not for or against anything, I just.
I think I'd pass that to Simon because I think.
Can I just ask for clarification? My understanding is this is a coordination and facilitation role. I think that the, mr Pickford might be able to clarify, but I think the term lobbying is way off in another direction frankly, but I don't know.
Through, through the chair, I would, I would, I would agree with that. I think it's, it is a coordination role, I think it's, it is purely that, it's not really lobbying or, or any kind of activism in that sense. It's, it's purely coordination, putting together a whole lot of things which are currently being done in a coordinated way to make sure that it's the most efficient way of addressing the issue.
And finally, is there a reason, and I think you might have, have answered this or answered it the other day, and I've probably forgotten, about why this didn't come to the long-term plan in this, in the sense of having it out there for public consultation rather than ending up at this point? Did it just get left out of the earlier?
The work hadn't been completed at that point. So the work wasn't completed by January, so we had to have those reports done in December. So the work had only just begun.
councillor Calvert, do you wish to speak to it as well? You've asked some questions, but do you wish to speak to it as well? It is, we're in debate now.
Yes, I would like to. This hasn't come as a request from economic, sorry, Enterprise Dunedin for more money and I wouldn't know whether that was what they would want to use an additional, very strange amount of $39,434 for. If we had $30,000 or $40,000 to spend on food-related issues in Dunedin, I would much prefer to see funds in an area where people could apply to it for, such as the Food Bank might apply or to help people organise a community garden or a range of food initiatives that the community comes up with. Yet another internal policy sort of position is not something I would have thought we need to do. And had Enterprise Dunedin thought it was a priority, it would have come to us as a priority from then. I am concerned that this is not the best way of spending, let's just call it $40,000, in the food area. There's a lot of people doing some really important things that actually involve people eating in Dunedin who could really do with a little bit of money to help them help people who are, for example, who are, for example, hungry or short of something, and that's where I would prefer to see forty thousand dollars spent in Dunedin to do with food. That would make them more resilient and it would be more sustainable for them.
Councillor Lord.
My question, perhaps it should be to Simon or if you feel capable of answering. I just still don't understand quite what this work is all about. Now, I got told last year if you understood, you'd be fully supportive, but the question I have from what Simon was just saying, that this is about pulling together resources and all that, I just don't quite understand what you mean by that. Like, can you elaborate on that a wee bit more? Will somebody elaborate on that a wee bit more? And if these are resources that we haven't got pulled together at the moment, what difference does it make if we have them all pulled together or not make, if that's okay to answer that?
I'm reluctant to have the meeting taken up with what should have been read in the reports and I'm happy for specific questions, but basically what you're asking councillor Lord is for the staff to give you a full explanation to convince you...
Well, I'll leave you for that, but I'm not surprised by that.
Well, fine, but can I ask that the answers be brief? We're rehashing stuff frankly that was canvassed in two thousand and thirteen when we passed this thing originally, but...
Would you like me to respond to that? Yes, from the research that we've done, the food resilience refers to an equal access of reliable and affordable supply of good quality food at all times, and that's food that is largely produced and sustainably locally. And that's where there's a, that's the formation of a resilient food chain and that's really what lies at the heart of resilience. So, certainly food security is one of those issues and that's where, that's assisting people who have got insufficient income to buy good food, that's a food security issue, but the resilience issue is a larger issue which is related to having a strong food supply chain locally. And those things can be achieved through various activities across various sectors.
Do you wish to speak to it as well? Councillor Lord, do you wish to speak to it as well? Councillor Noon.
Thank you, Worship. I need to make it perfectly clear, I am not against food resilience and I'm not against a Roman numeral one and two and B. But where I see delving into is an area where facilitation and coordination is actually happening, or certainly in some parts of the community. And if I can give you some examples, some years ago, and Waititi often lead the charge in changing people's lives and perception on how lives should be lived, but they were planting fruit trees on road reserves probably about ten or twelve years ago. If you drive down McLoughlin Road in Waititi, you'll see those trees there. They never got approval to do them, but they just went and got on with it. They made it happen. Now, what I'm saying is that there are examples of groups that are prepared to band together and make these things happen, and I think the key thing the council can do is to provide and help enable that to happen and the main resource they need is somewhere to either grow vegetables or fruit in a communal way, in a place that can be easily accessed and it's safe and et cetera, et cetera. So, what I hear from staff about parks and reserves, they're going through a process to try and identify these areas and enable these groups who are well-informed, well-educated, know all about food resilience, they just want to get on with the job. And, once again, an example in their local community, the East Otago Farmers Market, which happens for the first year or two, it was in Palmerston, it's now in Waikwadi. During the last season, it was held fortnightly. This coming season, they're about to hold their AGM, they plan to hold it weekly this coming sort of spring to autumn, and they're just all working together as a team. They're coming together not with any help from anybody other than themselves, all having a common good, wanting to sell their produce, locally grown produce, share it with the community and essentially reap the benefits of it and get on them. So, I just feel that if we're enabling that to happen already, we don't need to put more resource in there. So, that's why I can't support C, but certainly support food resilience A and B.
Thank you. I'm supportive of this in general, but I do have some reservations about the third paragraph and they relate really to the priority of the issue. I don't think there's an issue for me with the word per se, but when I recall the conversation yesterday about graffiti removal and the small amount concerned, then forty thousand dollars irrespective of what we've been discussing earlier today just suddenly become a lot more significant. And while I might support this going forward into our final wash-up, whenever that might happen, it would certainly not be a more important priority for me than, for example, the identical amount for the city safety officers whom we have lost thanks to other losses of government funding. So, I guess it's a matter of comparative priorities even at the small end of the scale for sums like this.
Councillor Wilson.
I'm going to support this and for a number of reasons. Food is a very difficult industry to be in and I talk from some experience. It is where some of the lowest-paid people now in Dunedin work. It's also one of the hardest to crack regulatory wise and I have to say that whatever the reason, I think there has been a change within this institution in the last year now that we've had a focus on food resilience at a number of levels and I think that that alone has made significant difference to operators. It's one that if you weren't there, you possibly wouldn't know about. The other reason I'm going to support it is, and it's in your patch mic, so you may or may not know that my food supplier, my egg supplier is about to go out of business. She's just finding it really tough. She's not networked in with anyone, she's out on her own, she hasn't got a logistics system that works for her that has probably made her job much harder. It's been a fantastic wee company, it's gone through three hands in three years, it's, I think, opened everyone else's eyes to egg, free-range eggs and what it could mean and the difference. And it's just so sad to see someone, a business like that going out, which has brought income to an area that there aren't plentiful jobs in, at Berwick, and it's actually connected a whole lot of other businesses together. Now, the efficiencies of a business are a business thing, but if we can build up a network where people can share and logistics, it's the logistics often about food that is the hardest and most difficult part. And if you're out there on your own, it's really hard to build that capacity. I have no doubt that having some resources available to connect some of those smaller businesses, which are often the first ones off the rank as far as the first thing they'll do, will, the potential to grow. It is the large corporate nature of food where there is substantial money to go into advertising and loss leader pricing that makes food equally hard to get into and to change those lines. To get your food into a supermarket, you usually have to have the logistics to get it to Christchurch to be delivered back down to Dunedin. Those sort of things actually need some rethinking. It just doesn't make sense. And to that end, I'm going to support it. I'm hoping that that is going to be the area that this money and resources go into, but I have to say that until you've lived it, I'm not sure that people understand how hard the food industry really is and how hard it is for some of us to get the food that we want to get to sell.
Councillor McTavish.
Thank you, Worship. Few things. I think the first comment that I would make is just around the dual nature of the requests that we initially made. We are required as a local government authority to ensure that we are delivering infrastructure and services in a way that is efficient, effective and appropriate to current and future circumstances. And when we first looked at this as a community resilience forum back in two thousand and twelve, the concern that we had was that whilst there are a number of departments currently working on food, and I think councillor Noon has inquired as to one of the status of the resourcing in one of those departments, councillor Wilson has referred to another in terms of the regulatory approach, and Patricia's report refers to a whole range of the sort of ways in which we support this issue. However, the concern that we had as a forum was that each of those departments was doing it in a way that was completely uncoordinated with the other departments and as such, whilst each of those departments may be operating within their silo in an effective and efficient way, there was a real risk that they were actually working against each other in terms of the outcomes that they were seeking to achieve. So, if I may use the example that councillor Noon used, the Blue Skin Market. A couple of years ago, we had market operators come to us and plead with us to remove the food licensing fees that were being imposed on them by our regulatory arm so that they could continue to operate as a community market. And as a result of that, as councillor Noon has indicated, that market has been able to go from strength to strength rather than suffocating under regulatory pressure and as it turned out, unnecessary costly regulatory pressure because we have managed somehow to do without incurring that cost. So, that was part of it. Part of it is about pulling together those different silos within our organisation that are working on food and ensuring that we are indeed meeting our responsibilities under the Local Government Act of fulfilling the need to deliver our infrastructure and services in an efficient and effective way right across the organisation. It's my view that there is still a significant amount of work to be done in that area and I think that the report that we have received from this short-term position that we had in place has confirmed that and outlined a number of areas in which we could improve in that regard. The second area in which we identified that there was a need for work was in coordinating external stakeholders to come together and have conversations about food, because we are but one of the stakeholders within our city which has an influence on this fundamental human need. Without that coordination, again, there is a risk that we are all operating in our own silos and that the outcomes for our community are poor as a result. So, in one sense, you can have supermarkets pushing for profits in the area without recognition or discussions with local distributors or the potential for local procurement and unless there are conversations happening between those local suppliers and manufacturers and those supermarkets on a regular basis, then the potential for connections, the potential for work in that area to deliver results is not being had. Similarly, you might think, well, food waste and poverty are two things which are completely delinked from one another, but that's not the case. You take the example of food share, which our waste department, SEED, funded a number of years ago, which is now working and starting up in Auckland and delivering pretty phenomenal results for our community in terms of the number of agencies that they are supplying food to, the amount of waste that they are diverting from landfill and the outcomes for needy people that councillor Calvert has previously highlighted. In other cities, the way that they do this is that they have things called food policy councils and the potential of these is highlighted in the report. It may be that a food policy council that brings together those stakeholders is not, is an overly bureaucratic way of doing it in Dunedin, but certainly there is a need for coordination between stakeholders. And in my view, this piece of work, this forty thousand dollars would be a worthy investment to ensure that we have a one-year project that starts to facilitate those connections, puts in place both internal coordination and citywide coordination around, as I say, this very basic human need. The last thing that I would like to say is it is absolutely critical in my view, in terms of the way that we are portioning our finances at this time, that we are doing so with strong regard to our strategies and ensuring that whatever we do is delivering right across our strategies. If, and I would guide members to have a look at the appended checklist on the back of the document, the report, which clearly highlights how well work on food aligns with all of our strategies. It is one of those wonderful things that allows us to deliver simultaneously on all of our different agendas. It's a unifying concept, it's a unifying issue, and I think those are the sorts of things that we would do well to invest in Dunedin at this time. Finally, the research that has been done by the Otago University's Department of Human Nutrition on this issue does show that it is necessary for work on food to be important, sorry, to be successful. It is important that we have three lots of stakeholders understanding this issue and deeply believing that we can do good by focusing on this issue. That's the community and I think we have heard clearly from the community and clearly from stakeholders that they feel that this is a priority and that they feel that there are gains to be made should our work in this area be delivered in a more coordinated way. The second is council staff and I think that as Patricia has gone around the organisation and talked to the various staff involved in these conversations, there is a developing consciousness, as councillor Wilson has referred to, about the potential for increased collaboration and the outcomes that can happen, the enhanced outcomes we can deliver when we work across the organisation on this issue. The final set of stakeholders that is important to have on board are elected members. And so, today, the question for us as a council is whether we will join, whether we will be that third pillar to this work. If we're not willing to be, then that's fine and we'll just have to park this for another time, but that would sadden me because I think we are the missing foot or the missing leg to the stool and it would be because of our lack of support that this project and this work didn't go ahead. Thank you.
Councillor Staines.
Thank you, Worship. I see one or two councillors struggling to understand why in the last paragraph, the suggestion is that this role sits within Enterprise Dunedin, and I just wanted to address that. Clearly, the work that this person will be undertaking spans many areas of council and I've spoken with councillor McTavish, there is clearly a strong link with community here in a number of the activities. But on page eighteen of the Food Resilience Discussion Document, for those that you have looked at it, you see things like design an online start-up pack for new food businesses, develop a suite of incentives for food innovation and social slash small food enterprises, list registers kitchens available to community groups and others, engage with supermarkets and other large food retailers to encourage local food initiatives. These have impacts in our economy. They are encouraging or areas that can encourage more people in our community to become involved in the food industry and by doing so, improve the resilience of Dunedin's food supply. So, I think for me, the first concern was when I read this paper, that the money was going to go in building another policy and a whole lot of set of recommendations and I was concerned that that was not what I would like to see and I don't think that we need to have a lot more policy and a lot more recommending documents. There is, just looking through the tasks that are in this first stage, the short-term, there are lots of practical things that we can do now that will either have a significant impact in the area of our residents and community and also in the area of economic development and small business. So, I think Enterprise Dunedin has the contacts into business, I think it's a, the cooperation between Enterprise Dunedin and the community development area will mean that we get lots more traction and that we can actually deliver some hard stuff on the ground as opposed to another piece of paper. So, I'd encourage you to support it. Councillor Vandivis has left, so I can say it's not a very large sum of... Councillor Vandervass has left, so I can say it's not a very large sum of money, but it could do a lot of good. Thank you.
Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, your worship. I can support this also. We know that as our climate becomes less stable, the reliability of our food supply will also become less stable at the same time. That's in terms of growing and producing and also in terms of delivering as the energy required for land transit becomes prohibitive or potentially even non-existent. And so our options are, we can start to prepare ourselves now for being able to survive those changes or we can scramble in its wake. And I think the negative impacts of choosing the latter would potentially be disastrous for our community. And so I see this as taking a step in the right direction to try and future-proof us against that. Just a quick comment, I guess, with regards to councillor Noon's suggestion that the community are already doing it anyway and therefore we shouldn't put any resourcing into helping coordinate that kind of work. That's essentially what should be happening in the adaptive reuse of heritage buildings. That's certainly the role of private building owners to be maintaining the buildings and upgrading the buildings. But we acknowledge that by allocating some staff resource to that, we can make that go a lot further and we as a community will reap the benefits of that. And I think anybody around this table would be hard-pressed to argue that that isn't what's happened by allocating some staffing resource to do that. Same with tourism, quite frankly, I mean tourism operators are all private businesses. What role should we have in those affairs? But we recognise that by allocating staff and resourcing to helping coordinate those private tourism operators, they are all better off and we in turn are also. So I don't see how approving staffing resource to this line of work is inconsistent with those approaches that goes so unquestioned around this table. So I commend these recommendations and will certainly be voting for them.
Councillor Thompson.
Councillor McTavish has had to swallow a couple of dead rats over the last couple of days. I can swallow a very small centipede. But I would like, with her permission, to see a D added to that, which is that a set of performance objectives be created for the work and the work evaluated back against them. Because I think, for me, I don't have a problem with any of the principles elucidated, I only have a problem with whether or not it's actually able to generate some outcomes. And so I think if she's comfortable with that, then I could support the rest of it.
Can I say that both you and I have briefly forgotten who it was that moved it? It was councillor Staines. So just as you're asking councillor McTavish for permission, I'd forgotten that he hadn't spoken at the beginning either. So if councillor Staines is happy with that, then you won't need to ask councillor McTavish's permission.
I think the intention is that we write it in D, right? Yeah. Do you have words, councillor Thompson?
The work we've developed and the work reported back against them.
Thank you, councillor Pete. And the need to improve our food supply resilience. So to me, this is about, on the one hand, opportunities and on the other hand, the risks. And the resilience refers to the risks. And we frankly need to know a hell of a lot more about both of them. The opportunity part, the risk part, has been identified. Councillor Wilson has pointed out some of the creeping risks around food supply and food resilience. And I think we know, we need to find out about those things before they come up and bite us. But the opportunity part is quite rightly being located in Enterprise Dunedin because that's- there's so many opportunities and so many of our businesses in some way working with food. And I know that when this sort of thing has been done in other parts of the world, the opportunities have been picked up and the benefits have been enormous. I also note that a lot of the interaction that our staff have across council with food in any form is around compliance. And compliance is one of the areas which is really challenging for council because that's where the interaction is between the regulator and the regulated. And as we know, whether it's building control or the Health Department or whatever, there's potential for friction, there's potential for misunderstanding and there's certainly potential for problems when everything's in silos. So one of the things that I see this doing is enabling us to serve our business customer clients, if you like, who come in here for permits and consents and all that sort of thing, in the food area much, much better. We know we have got an ambition to serve our business clients better. This is one way to do it. And it doesn't make much sense to me to say we need to be servicing our business clients better, but we don't want to put any coordination in place to do it. We're just contradicting ourselves. So I'm very supportive of this. This will pick up on, A, opportunities for the benefit of the wider community, B, opportunities to service our business clients better, and C, keep an eye on those risks that are in a rapidly changing marketplace and world, probably a lot closer than we think they are, a lot more ominous than we think they are. So I can support this too. Now- Now, it has been pointed out to me by councillor Staines that he didn't get the chance to speak to this at the beginning and he has spoken, but I'm going to now give him the opportunity for a right of reply, just to even things up.
Although everyone spoke very strongly in support of the motions, they haven't quite convinced me with regards to C, so I would still like to have C taken separately, please.
Councillor Thompson.
Match and Kerry from Lantre.
Councillor Vanevers. Oh, God, a demotion. Listen, with regard to the Regent Report, I'm sorry that councillor Vandervass is not here. I just want to cover off one of the issues he raised, which is about the importance of where people buy tickets. I have got hold of Terry and he has- he and the Regent have finished their discussions. There will be absolutely no difference in where people purchase tickets. I thought that was the case, but I just wanted to confirm it before I told you. So no member of the public will see any conceivable difference at all as a result of this change. They will still be working together in partnership to deliver services to the city.
Thank you. Okay, we'll take a break. Twenty-five past, we'll get back into it. Okay, councillors, we'll get underway now. The position we are in is that we are clearly not going to finish this evening, hence I won't be going to Metre Mairs tomorrow in Wellington. But we also have some chunky items like Adatoy and the cycleways, et cetera. But the staff have said, look, because of staff availability, et cetera, there's a number of rats and mice that they'd like to get underway now. So I'm going to be guided by them. There's some, we'll start with Cozy Homes, but there's some others that Jane has pointed out, topics that were parked when we were going through the submissions that didn't have reports attached to them. She'll provide me with a list of those, we'll get them out of the road. Councillor Wilson.
Your worship, I know that I'm personally very concerned that we'd have to go tomorrow, not because it delays you going to Metre Mairs, but because I know Richard has got other commitments that he can't be here for. Can I ask that we could consider going a wee bit later and see if we can get through it?
I'm quite happy to go a bit later, but I have a commitment at half past six this evening, which I can't avoid.
Okay, and councillors, I'm more nervous of councillor Thompson not being here than yourself perhaps, but yeah, I know, I appreciate it.
I can suggest that if, with the agreement of the council, we can go to six, if that's what people want. You don't want to go. How would people feel? Get a bit more out of it out of the road? Right, let's go to six and then, I suspect we'll still have bits and pieces, but let's get through these rats and mice and then maybe go on to some of the things that the councillors who can't be here tomorrow would be concerned about and try and get them out of the road as well. Okay, we're on to Cozy Homes Shareable Trust proposed funding, item seven, or report seven, welcome Rebecca and Nicola and Paul. Can I open it up to questions for a start and then into councillor Wilson?
I have a concern with the proposal and I'll indicate I'm happy to move it, but my concern is that the- I understand that this is about moving the fence up to the top rather than ambulance at the bottom, but it's not going into money that will instantly do that. And my concern is that it's going to be a lag. Albert, having said that, we've done some stuff with the other Warm House budget or whatever it is that may predicate that anyway. I don't, again, want to see, not again, sorry, I don't want to see money just going into a feel-good thing that doesn't make those differences. And are you really confident that this proposal will, in a relatively short time, and be the best way that we can get out of having the need for the electricity fund of such a substantial sort, make a difference?
The, in, what year is it? 2013, we had a Cozy Homes Symposium. And that was held, it was in September, and it was held because the Dunedin City Council has invested in an insulating of houses for some time, since I've been involved in community development here. And we have noticed along that time that there's been so many changes in the field and so many different players and a whole lot of people who don't know where to go for the right advice and all of that stuff. And so the Symposium was an opportunity to pull everybody together and say, how can we work collectively and go forward together? And so that's where we're at. The trust has now been, we've got the trustee through the company's office, it's sitting with the Charities Commission at the moment, waiting for its big tick. We are at the stage where bank accounts are being opened, we have agreement around the looking after of the finances. The key is the employment of a person to take it to the next giant step. And that's where these requests are coming from. So I'm really speaking on behalf of the trust now rather than this city.
I should declare, I am the Chair of the Trust. And the purpose, the other members are Gillian Bremner from Presbyterian Social Services, Geoff Donaldson from the ORC, Marion Poore from Public Health South and Scott Willis from the Blueskin Resilience Trust. And picking up on what Rebecca said, there was quite a lot of insulation work going on and it was being funded by ECA, it was being funded by the Community Trust, it was being funded to some extent from memory by Dunedin City Council. But there was nothing, it was patched together and there was no one actually coordinating it. And we were getting noises from the Community Trust saying, this isn't our job to do this, it wasn't ECA's job to do it, although they were putting resource in that frankly they shouldn't have needed to. And it was clear that whilst some good work was being done, it was stumbling from bit of funding to bit of funding and then trying to patch together with goodwill. The government, the central government, ECA funding is increasingly at risk. There's a need for a vehicle to coordinate and, as Rebecca says, lift the effort to another level, particularly if ECA funding fades a bit and it needs to be more push from here. So this isn't just admin, this is making it happen.
Hey, look, the only question I had, and I'm totally supportive if it's a good thing to do, but I am concerned about, I can't unfortunately about not having a paper, I can't underline on my screen, what the bit I was looking for was, how much with that $200,000, what's the maximum they pay? Is it about $175,000 or something per household or per event?
You're talking about the Consumer Electricity Fund, the maximum they can pay is- Is $350. And they pay that to a person who is receiving budget advice. One of the keys of this is it links people into budget advice and they can do that once in five years. But I was at the meeting of the people who administered this on the ground this morning and, you know, they're saying that they've tightened up and taken away people who come up with Jay Smith hyphen Smith J and do all that sort of thing. They've taken that away, so people are actually only getting it once every so many years. But if there's a real need, they then make sure that person is-
So my question is, can we be, are you, because I don't know, so do you guys have any concerns that taking it out of one fund and putting it, look, I understand the whole concept that it's a far better fund to be in and that it's safety net rather than hammock.
From the people on the ground this morning, the feedback that $75,000 would be too high. They were saying that if they could cope with $50,000 being taken out of it, they wouldn't be brilliant, but that level, they're thinking $75 is too high and they were saying, but that's, this is not the organisation, they're not speaking for the organisations, they were speaking as the people who do their work on the ground.
Thank you.
Provide that call, who are these people that are saying this?
So the distributing agencies meet on a four times a year and it's the social workers who are working with clients who give out the fund. So it's the social workers who are at the coalface. And so they're suggesting that 50 would be a more comfortable level. We also talked about for them. The fund itself, the electricity fund, has not been completely utilised over the last few years and so there's been a, like last year, there was a $5,000, it was underutilised by $5,000 and the year before that it was a bit higher, we must have had a warmer winter. And so that money has accumulated and that's allowed, so the effect of not paying the electricity fund is somewhat softened because of that previous underspend.
I'm on page two of the report, point nine, which lists the accomplishments that have been achieved and I don't mean in a disparaging sense whatsoever, but every single one of those is a process accomplishment. There's not a single warmer person as a result of any of those accomplishments.
That's because it's currently being done by Paul.
But, it's a good point. But, so my question is, what is the funding that putting somebody into a coordination role will be accessed to enable actions that actually deliver on these, on objectives to be met?
So the Community Trust has indicated that insulation of houses is still one of their top priorities. They are unable to give figures around that, but it is still one of their priorities and they are keen for that coordination. They, they're unable to give figures around that, but it is still one of their priorities and they are keen for that coordination to assist that. The Dunedin City Council, that sixty-two and a half thousand dollars, or sixty and a half, sixty-two and a half is still there, so there's that funding. We, the trust has applied to the ORC for administrative assistance of twenty thousand, but also the Otago Community, Otago Regional Council's also got their Clean Heat Programme that will come under the umbrella of this. And we're also in discussions with the PHOs and, and Public Health South around their support. And that's, that's a first in, in that area. And so it's hoped that once we have all of those different threads come together that, that are dedicated, that this, that the trust can then have the impetus that we're discussing.
When you say you've applied to the PHOs, there is only one PHO has been for about five years.
Well, South has indicated they've put a small amount of money in through Marion Poore. And the Public Health South has said they've put a small amount of money in. Sorry, sorry, yeah.
Okay, so I'll come back to it in discussion.
councillor Cowan.
I'm sort of hearing maybe you're suggesting that less than seventy-five thousand, maybe that's an option two and a half or, yeah, no, that's option three. I take it what you're saying is almost all of it's being spent, although in previous years there's been an underspend. So what I'm taking it to be is that every dollar that we took out of, almost every dollar, maybe every dollar that we took out of the electricity fund is money that somebody would have otherwise been using, but they don't, they don't get to use to actually keep warm. Is that the case? Except for if there was an underspend now of five thousand and we allocated, say, fifty thousand, then maybe only forty-five thousand dollars worth of less money being spent on actual warm people would be happening.
With the current pool of money, the effect it would have in the first year is that about forty-two thousand dollars wouldn't be available. But the budget advisers and the social workers on the ground saying they can cope with that. One of the concerns I had is that actual electricity companies are referring people directly to them. Saying, you know, so the fund is used, but it's an important part of it. The, the other thing that I think we haven't mentioned that's missing in the city is there's no independent advice around what you should do to your house. So you can go to companies who will tell you, you should put in this system that pushes air around, or you should put in this insulation, or you should put in this solar power, or you should do this sort of thing. There's no one there where you can go and get independent advice. Part of this role eventually will be that that will be provided. I sat in the meeting this morning, I shouldn't lecture you, but I sat in the meeting this morning and said to people, how much of your hot water cylinder, the pipe out of it, should you lag to make a significant difference? None of those budget advisers knew that. Should you, you know, pellets are a vital thing in your house. We've removed them all. What do you do to replace pellets? You actually just put a small piece of wood along the curtain rail. Significant difference to the heating of your home. That information isn't readily available. It's not there. So it's having someone there that can go and give that to, to, to the people they work with. That, to, to work with a curtain bank so that the curtain bank does that when they install the curtains. I shouldn't point my finger, sorry.
So you're saying that there would be, if it was fifty, there would be forty-two or something less money spent directly on people being warmer? And that a priority, at least in your mind, Paul, would be for any money we put into it to go towards helping people understand how their best, how to best optimise their ways of improving their coziness. Is that, is that a fair summary of what I'm hearing?
Yes, to the second half, but the, the first half is that it would be ten thousand directly affected. So they've got enough buffer there. So they've got forty K that they can rely on. So it would be in a net effect of ten.
But when you're saying forty K they can rely on, that's because it's over, over money from last year and that won't happen again next year. Once we get a staff member in there and another administrator, that buffer won't be there. So that's a very short term. And once we get something in place.
This is discussion, this is discussion.
So it's a one-year ability for them to buffer most of a fifty thousand dollar reduction.
I'm just interested in, in the scale of the problem. There's one measure of it in the report that talks about the University of Otago, a survey in two thousand and eleven, and that was forty-seven percent of households. And from that you, you, you can get eighteen thousand homes, is that it? And then six thousand of which have been insulated or warmed up. And is that still the position?
These are, you know, we're talking big figures here and it, and we're not saying they're deadly accurate, but yes, that is still roughly the position. Yeah, there's still a lot of work to do. And insulation actually doesn't last forever. After ten to twelve years, you should be looking insulation and perhaps re-going back and doing it again. So the insulation fluff you put on your ceiling in nineteen seventy-something isn't doing anything.
So the Cozy Homes Trusts, are you saying they would be happy with the fifty? Or are you saying that the social services group that administer the electricity fund are happy with one hundred and fifty?
It was just the administrators, so it's not the actual organisations. But those administrators said they could cope, not well, but they would cope with it. We just took the fifty out. Not the, seventy-five, they said it was too much to remove from that fund, but they would be able to survive, yeah.
And the second part of the question, when there is, I hope you haven't answered this to anyone else, but when there was a surplus, you mentioned of five K, does that roll over to the next year or was that going to be returned back to council?
We have asked them to, to
Roll it over.
Roll it over, yes, that's why it's accumulated, yes, in their bank.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, would someone like to move something?
I'm happy to move. I know the report and do consider fifty thousand.
Basically, option, option Option three with fifty thousand instead of seventy-five. Is there a second for that? councillor Staines?
Is that for one year?
Sorry, a one-off?
In the meantime, you. Okay, speakers, councillor Thompson.
Look, just going back to my earlier questions, I'm not doubting for one moment the value of this. But the value can only be realised if, in large part, not entirely, but in large part if funding can be achieved as a result of this. So my concern is that if we lock this in and we don't manage to achieve that, then actually nobody's any warmer, but all we've done is create a job creation scheme for someone and I don't want that. I, I know, and I share your passion, I know that this is, you know, this whole area is frankly the, the the sewage pipes and treated water of a hundred years ago. I mean, the, the big advances in health have not come from being able to do flasher and flasher things in hospitals. They've come from doing things like this. And the, and the, the classic difficulty is always the long-term benefit against the short-term need. So I'm, I'm very supportive of where you're trying to go. What I want to do is suggest an amendment to the motion, which simply, I'll wait till I've got some attention at the top of the table. Which simply requires a, the, I haven't quite got the words right, but, but requires that it be, that funding be demonstrably achieved to apply towards the objectives of the trust before this is renewed in subsequent years. I don't know whether Wendy got that or not, but that's all right. I'll just write it down. Talk amongst yourselves, it'll be fine.
Demonstrably shown to achieve?
If you've got something to add, it better get here.
Yeah, I'm trying to write it.
Any further speakers? councillor McTavish.
Thank you, worship. In speaking to this, I, I agree with councillor Thompson in the sense that I think that there is a critical mass required to make this trust work. And I think that this council needs to show that it is willing to contribute to achieving that critical mass by giving it a strong chance in its first year. And for me, that would be fulfilling the full seventy-five thousand dollars which has been requested by the trust. And that, I think that sends a signal to other funders that we are serious about this and that they should take this trust seriously as well. When I reflect on where this trust has come from, it is the culmination of the work and contributions of about three years of a whole range of stakeholders in the community. And I think, you know, if I reflect back to the first Cozy Home Symposium that was pulled together jointly by the Otago Community Trust, staff, Presbyterian Support of Otago and Blueskin Resilient Communities Trust. I mean, there were over eighty people in the room and the message was unanimous around the need for a one-stop shop for Cozy Homes related activity in Dunedin. We're on the cusp of that. Well, we have it, we have the one-stop shop. But without a base level of funding to enable it to kick off, it won't fulfil the function which those stakeholders in that room at that time wished it to, to fulfil. I think the suggestion of councillor Thompson that we request a strong or demonstrable progress, I forget his words precisely, but demonstrable progress by this time next year, I think that's a very good one and it, it sends a strong message to the trust and to the support group of stakeholders that sit around that trust. Because I have had the privilege of sitting on that stakeholder group along with members like the Otago Property Investors Association, representatives from, from local iwi, a whole range of different stakeholders. And certainly I think the message should go to them as well that if, if, if we're serious about making this one-stop shop work, then we really need to get on with it in the first year. Put some serious runs on the board and ensure that by this time next year, if there are further funding requests, that there is a serious progress. Or certainly a serious commitment from other stakeholders to ensuring progress that can be put on the table. With regards to the funding and the source of funding, I think Mr Coffey, thank you for your update on what the partner organisation that delivers our Community Electricity Fund feels is manageable. This has been signalled for a number of years. It's not something that we're doing overnight. But I think seventy-five thousand is too much to take out of that in one year. The fifty thousand clearly is manageable, if not a perfect outcome. And the difficulty is that there will be a lag time between the impact of this trust's activities making an impact on the ground and the, the time and, or the year in which we reduce the amount of money available through that community fund. What I would, the different, or the, what I would acknowledge is not the case is that money that is in the electricity fund does not actually make anyone warmer. It helps pays, pay the bills. So really it's just a direct line to electricity companies, albeit shoring up the budgets of some of our worst-off citizens, which remains an important role. But I think that our focus needs to be on the longer game, needs to be on retaining that wealth in our community and ensuring that our citizens are indeed warmer. And there is only one way to do that and that's by improving the heating or the, the energy efficiency of our residents' homes. And this trust is our best chance of doing that. So I support the motion.
councillor Cowan.
I, sorry, sorry councillor Cowan, I've just been made aware that it's fifty thousand that's being moved rather than the full seventy-five. I do support this, but I would signal a subsequent show motion to test the mode of the meeting to see whether an additional twenty-five could come from, rather than from the Consumer Electricity Fund, from general rates this coming year.
I applaud councillor McTavish's optimism and I share some of councillor Thompson's concerns. In this case, we're going one step further than we were in the food resilience area where we used some funding to apply to a general food resilience thing, which we could have chosen to move off into directly helping people who were short of food. In this case, we're actually taking money out of a place that directly helps people pay a bill that would be keeping them warm, although I agree that the the money doesn't actually keep them warm of itself. I'm concerned that these things are, and I, I do understand that at the beginning of setting things up, a lot of the money goes towards setting things up at administration. I have no great confidence that these things that have been done to set something up are going to make people a whole lot warmer. And I will be very concerned if we don't see any reason to believe that people in Dunedin are any warmer this time next year as a result of more people going to the trust and more administration of this and more people talking to each other about whatever. I think that it's got the potential for being very useful. But I think it's also potentially problematic for council to keep forming a variety of groups and collections and looking for funding from here, there and everywhere. Everybody else is looking for funding from here, there and everywhere too. At the very time that other groups that are acting in the same areas that we are, are also wanting money and we're then sucking other money, not only our money, but other money out of communal activities. So we need to be very careful that we're not taking money which could be going to other people who might be age concern or grey power, I don't know who else might be helping people with, who have energy issues and lack of cozy home issues. The other issue I see is that this has come again half-heartedly to a long-term plan when it should be either in, if it's intended to come in looking for some money in the long-term plan, it should come in in the publicly consulted area. If it's coming in to look for grants, it should come in in the grants area. It shouldn't keep turning up in an ad hoc way in the middle of a process, to my way of thinking. So I won't be pleased if it comes back next year after everybody's had a think about the annual plan and after other things, but in the middle of our deliberations about deciding what to do with money. It should come in in a proper fashion. And by then we should know where it's going and why it's helping people's coziness.
Further speakers? Well, I'll speak to this. I, first of all, I support this, as you probably would expect me to, since I chair the trust. But I would go so far as to say that the electricity fund is a waste. It's a waste because it entrenches poor health, it entrenches houses that aren't being insulated. It just pays bills because people, and the, and the heat goes out the window. Every bit of money that comes out of there and goes into insulating a house is another homeowner that doesn't need the electricity fund. And their house is better off and their health and the health of their kids is better off as well. So in fact, this is a much more constructive way and a much more long-term way of using the money than having it in the electricity fund. And I appreciate the, the need for Band-Aids, but the trouble with Band-Aids And I appreciate the need for Band-Aids, but the trouble with Band-Aids, if you don't fix the sore in the first place, is you just keep needing Band-Aids. This is a bit like, give a person a fish and they eat, give them a rod and they they eat for one day, give them a rod and they eat for the rest of their lives because they can do it. And make no mistake, this is very much a health issue. Thirty percent of the admissions to Dunedin Public Hospital are partly or wholly a result of poor housing. This is fundamentally aimed at improving the pretty poor standard of insulation in housing in this city. The, the other thing I'd like to address is councillor Calvert's referred to it being taken from other agencies. The fact is, other agencies are queuing up to put money into this. The Community Trust, Public Health South, we didn't go to them and ask. They came and said, we are very supportive of this, we understand its implications, we want to contribute as much as we can. And all this is asking is that council, insofar as it facilitated the effort, or that coordinated the original Cozy Home Symposium, or helped to, hosted it, I should say, more than coordinated it, is responding to the entreaties of other organisations. At the meetings prior to the setting up of the trust, the meetings of the Cozy Home Group prior to the setting up of the trust, the Community Trust was saying to us, we need a mechanism to channel our money through. We cannot keep putting it through in this ad hoc way. We A need a mechanism and B we need better results out of this because it's just uncoordinated. This is a way of doing it much more efficiently and effectively and getting some results on the ground. So I am very supportive of it and I will be supportive of the consequential motion to increase it to seventy-five thousand because I think it's a much better use of the money.
Further speakers? Sure. Well, you've asked a question.
Sorry, the consequential motion, will it be to go back into this fund or from the general rate? She said general rate and I just, yeah, okay.
I would support it either way, but it's not up to the mover.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if that was the feeling. Should we just do seventy-five out of this fund like they asked and the thing, it was just after.
It would be up to the mover of this motion, so I can't. Right, councillor Wilson, would you like to exercise your right of reply?
I appreciate some concerns about not doing this in the long-term plan as if the world was perfect. I have to say that I, reading the submissions, there are a number of people who are concerned with this issue and have raised it in other ways. Community boards and like, and over the last few years, there've been substantial number of submissions saying we need to get on top of this. How we get there is always going to be fraught, but this motion is supported by the agencies that will be implicated with the loss. And to that end, I can support it. I'm generally supportive of the other subsequent motion that's been suggested, but I just didn't want to complicate it by looking at the two funds.
And put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carrie.
I'll just, I'll move, your worship, that the council approves twenty-five thousand dollars to the Cozy Homes Trust from, I don't even know if I have to say, from the general rate or just general funds in the twenty fifteen sixteen year. Oh, yeah, sorry, on the same basis as B, but I'm not sure. Yeah, so maybe just copy and paste.
All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
Carrie. Councillors, we'll go on to item five, which is city safety. I'm just responding to the needs of some who might have to leave a bit earlier, so it's. Okay, well. Yeah, sure.
I do. Yeah, I don't really want to ask any questions and I don't think we need to dwell on it, but the report is pretty self-evident and it's another example of an area where a callous, uncaring government has pulled funding out of good, quite good, useful purposes. Sorry, I don't mean. I'm moving that we allocate fifty thousand dollars to the provision of these safety officers. I think every little bit of extra assistance with eyes and presence on the street is extremely helpful. I'm sure, real or not, there is a perception at times that certain parts of the town aren't safe at peak times. And much in all, as you'd like more cops, you know you're not going to get them and this is a help. They interfacing and interact with the police. I think it's a very good investment for thirty-eight cents a year for each one of our citizens. And I.
Do I have a second? A second? Second, but this councillor P.
Oh, certainly. I think this is. That's fine. I, well, no, I would expect continued reporting of the statistics the way we have it in the current report. The report unequivocally states that there's demonstrable positive results of having these people on the street. That's pretty hard to argue with and we are talking about a very small amount of money for an entirely sensible purpose.
Welcome, Kevin. Right, we're on to the funding of the city safety programme. If it's, we've got a resolution, just so you know what the context is.
We have a resolution in front of us, seeking to put some money into it. But I want to give the opportunity for councillors to ask any questions, so that's what we'll come into now. So councillor Calvert, you had a question in the first instance.
Just a question about when the safety officer or these safety officers or whoever they operate, I just noticed noticed somebody saying to me a couple of days ago, they would be a good idea, but they're never there at the time of night where they would most usefully be used. So I have no idea when they're there or where they're there or whether they hang around in like the octagon at two in the morning or they hang around somewhere else at eight o'clock in the evening.
Through here, they generally start at about six o'clock. There's one shift that sort of does that and focuses around the octagon and George Street. Their main lot starts at ten o'clock in the evening, do a quick walk around, attend the police briefing and then work three till four in the morning.
Further questions, councillors?
Councillor Wilson.
The reason I was, I'm keen to see some measures in here in demonstrable need is as things change with the LAP, it is conceivable that some of these safety issues that have been there in the past will reduce anyway or that alternative policing arrangements, and this doesn't really talk to that, will also manage some of that behaviour changed differently and therefore the need could reduce in a perfect world.
I'd like to think so, yes.
Councillor Hawkins.
Just a question about the options in the report. Or for my clarification, the city safety programme, is that the city safety officers and the graffiti budget? Is that, are they combined to make the city safety programme?
For this report it is, but for the programme that's been funded by the Ministry of Justice, we've also had crime prevention through environmental design initiatives, but we've dropped those out.
So of the fifty thousand dollars in option one, how much of that is covering the city's safety officers?
About forty thousand and ten thousand to graffiti removal.
And we've, but which we've already allocated, no, funding through different, some clarification?
Can I just clarify that point? So I hadn't read Kevin's report at that stage and I have since. The money that has come from the city safety programme to community development has gone to Task Force Green for the actual removal of graffiti rather than the coordination of graffiti. And so it's to pay for Task Force Green. Previously, it's paid for an additional supervisor with a that then supervises volunteers around the painting out of graffiti. This last financial year, that's been five thousand dollars.
To maintain the level of activity of the safety officers, forget graffiti, please, will require how much for them to work, continue at the current level?
Forty thousand.
Then my motion is forty thousand, I think.
Yeah, Kevin, I just wondered if the Ministry of Justice had a, had an argument for why they were cutting the support for this.
When I took over the management of the city safety project, I was told then we had about three months left. And then I got a phone call from Ministry of Justice who said that the government hadn't given them new priorities, so they extended it for twelve months. And near the end of that twelve months, they extended it for another eighteen months. But in a phone call from the Ministry of Justice two weeks ago, the government has set new priorities for them and that presumably is taking up the money, so the funding is ceasing.
Any further questions? Councillor McTavish.
I guess my question, I'm going to make a statement then I'm going to ask a question. The statement is, we are going through, over the next year, we're going to be implementing a new LAP and the changes that are associated with that. The question is, in that context, how easy is it going to be to monitor the outcomes, apples with apples, around the city safety programme? Given that the numbers of people on the street at any one time and all that sort of thing is probably going to change.
Just off the top of my head, I would suggest that the number of interventions they have with disorderly behaviour, I'd like to think they would be sort of fading away because they certainly initially I'd expect them to work until four AM still. So I'd like to think from sort of two, two-thirty, there's a drop-off of disorderly interventions.
Kevin, on that regard, if the LAP changes and and we put in measures here, what would we be measuring? The performance of the safety officers or the performance of the LAP?
Good question.
Thank you, Kevin.
Could we have it up there?
Yeah. Well, I was just seeking, maybe it will be clear from this, but I was just seeking clarification as whether it's a one-year-only intention or whether it's an ongoing intention in the motion, annual funding.
Right, speakers to this. Councillor Bentz, perhaps you've pretty much, how do you say, any other speaker? Councillor Calvert.
Sorry, I just like that question answered. Is it intended to be for this year until we then have a look after the LAP? Or is it intended to go on? So you mean four hundred thousand over ten years on the long-term plan? So that's four hundred over ten years. Yeah, so it's on the long-term plan and keeps being, so that's four hundred thousand at where.
Right, is there any, councillor Noonan?
Apologise that I didn't hear councillor Bentz and Pope comment when he moved the motion. But as far as I'm concerned, clearly the government have got different priorities, but we can't afford not to drop the ball on on this priority, which is all about the image of the city and ensuring whoever the visitors are or locals, that they can still feel safe. And it is all about perception. We want people to come and enjoy and particularly the heart of the city, the CBD. So I'm very supportive of this and clearly the stats prove, although there's a modest drop-off in in crime, but it's that perception which is particularly important and can have a huge impact on the image of the city.
Councillor McTavish.
I'm, I feel slightly unwilling to fund this on an ongoing basis. I think it should be a regular check-in that we go, right, is this worth it? Are we seeing things moving in the right direction? I note that there is significant differences around the country as to whether or not this is a funded service. And I think we ought to be looking at some of those other places to see whether there are alternative ways of providing a perception of safety in our CBD. I'd note that the perception is, if I read it correctly, going in the wrong direction anyway at the moment. So I'm not sure that we can credit or if we're crediting safety officers for that trend. I'm not sure if that's quite what we would want to be doing. The concern that I have is that we ought to be engaging regularly with government on this, pointing out the fact that we are currently funding policing, local policing. And I'm not sure whether that is actually what the government would like us to be doing if they're interested in us focusing on core services, which seems to have been the message historically. So I would be more comfortable if councillor Bentz and Pope considered removing the word annual funding and then we could revisit this next year. I'm happy to support it this year, given that we will be changing to a local alcohol policy regime and I think it is important during that regime to have some stability in terms of the presence that we have in the CBD.
What I wanted to say was, I won't support this, but I would support the, if what councillor McTavish is foreshadowing is the same thing only for the next year while we're establishing the future needs and whatever else we're doing. So if councillor McTavish was foreshadowing a fullback motion, I would support it in a way that I can't approve four hundred thousand over ten years at this point.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. I support this. I get a sort of a here we go again feeling from this that we're covering an element of taxes with rates and, you know, it's just ongoing. I would support councillor McTavish's view for a reviewable annually, a kind of inclusion in there because I think we do need to just keep an eye on it and especially in light of the forthcoming LAP. So what we're talking about here is a street-level law and order effort that's really important for our city, particularly as we introduce this new LAP.
Further speakers?
I'm just going to indicate that I'll support the foreshadowed motion rather than this one.
Well, for my part, I deeply resent the fact that continually central government enters into things, asks local government to partner up on things that aren't core business, at the same time lambasting us for not dealing with our core business alone, and then pulls the pin. And it's happened, in the short time I've been on this council, it's happened three or four times. And it's another impost on our rate payers to pay for things that ought to be paid for at a central level. And then we get criticised on all sides for raising the rates in order to pay for it. So I am, at one level, extremely reluctant to approve the funding out of our rating, except that it's our community that pays the price if we don't. It's not central government that pays the price if we don't keep welcome, a welcome and some kind of handle on preventing disorder in our. on preventing disorder in our streets. I also would prefer that it was done on an annual basis. I would say, though, that the idea, the only thing we can do is set a baseline. If the LAP is coming in, we're not, we can only set a baseline. And those baselines will be in the disorder statistics that the police hold. We don't have any others. So I would imagine that either in the wash-up at the end of this meeting or on an annual basis, we'll be looking at this anyway and deciding whether to continue with it. So in one sense, whether the word 'annual' is in there or not, every year, this council gets a crack at every bit of funding that we do and makes a decision on it. So it's kind of irrelevant that the word's there. I would like to see it looked at every year and as we assess and review all our services and decide whether we should continue funding them. But reluctantly and loaded with resentment for central government's actions, I will be supporting this.
councillor Bentz.
Thank you. I don't think there's much of a difference of opinion. We think this is demonstrably a useful service and we resent having to do it ourselves because government's chosen to walk away from it. But quite clearly, we have some stats. And I said earlier that I would expect us to be monitoring this on an annual basis. And I think you touched on the annual or 10 years question in the end of your comments, Mr Mayor. This is a long-term plan. We would, I expect, monitor everything that's in that long-term plan on an annual basis. And if we find, we get a report from staff, that there's better use for this money or we need more, then we'd look at that in due course. So I've got no issue with having an annual contribution in all of the 10 years of an annual plan, because I know that next year, when we look at the annual plan, it's going to be reviewed, as everything else is. So if people want to have a semantic argument, that's fine. They can vote against this and then put it back in for one year and do it the following year and do it the following year. Because we know the way the alcohol industry is and the way social behaviour on the streets is, this sort of requirement is going to be an ongoing need.
Okay, I'm going to put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against?
No.
We'll have a division, please. It was obviously carried, was it? Oh, fine, we won't have a division, please. The time we got left, some submissions that came to us that were kind of orphans. And there's no report attached to them, but we parked them and we'd like to get through some of those. So the first one on this list is the Carisbook Stadium Trust. It was Ms Butler's submission. And my understanding is that there's a resolution been prepared. We'll put it up and see. In response to that submission.
Thanks. In moving this, I think it's unreasonable for the Carisbook Stadium Trust to be withholding information that is pertinent to the city and the city's expenditure. And I think we need to get some progress in this area. It won't be until we have this information that perhaps some of the remaining angst in our community can be perhaps put at ease. So I think, I hope you'll all support it.
councillor Calvert.
Just a question. Was the intention about the legal position regarding our organisation's access, rather than access in the official information sense, access?
Us having getting access to it. If we have it, I would assume it's then subject to the Local Government Information Act anyway. And so the first thing is, are we entitled to it? And if we are, we should have it.
councillor Lord.
Sorry. If we don't have the ability to just grab it as it is, it's not being made freely available. Is there anything that we can do? Well, how would you go about making it legally available? How do we, what is this actually going to do? I'm just trying to work that out. Well, I'm just, I'm reading that and I'm trying to work out what it will actually do. As I understand, at the moment, this information is not freely available to us. So how will this make it available to us? Or can it make?
The submission, as I understand it, asserted that the information was not made freely available to council. And my inquiries informally are that, yes, that's the case. So in order to clarify or and/or enforce our rights, if we do have any, as council, this is the suggestion of the way forward to seek.
What we're asking you effectively is, we're asking the chief to determine whether or not that can be got. And if it can be got through legal means, whatever, proceed with that. Okay, thank you.
Any further speakers? Well, for my part, as I seconded this, I don't think it was an unreasonable submission in that regard. And I think that it behooves us to clarify the situation, to tidy it up. Because it's not a, it's not a great look for the assertion to be able to be made and not clarified one way or the other around our rights to what should be our documentation. So I support this. There are speakers, I'll put it, all those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Carried. The Ataga Wide... What's this? Oh, Performance Improvement Framework. Now, that's actually a report, Report 15. And it's a pity the chief is ahead, because she's been quite busy. She has been instrumental in negotiating that through the mayoral forum. So she probably isn't positioned to know more about it than most. But anyway, welcome, Marianne, welcome, Bill. I'll invite questions for a start. councillor Calvert.
I was just going to move a resolution, except that the wording notes a statement about participation and will be included in... Yeah, I'd like to move the resolution.
Okay.
Recommended in that.
Okay, I'll second councillor Staines. I'll just park that in the meantime, until we've clarified any questions.
What's the word 'in', included in the final?
What's that? Oh, yes, fine. Now, questions, councillor McTavish.
Thank you, your worship. I'm sorry, I'm going to make a statement, then I'm going to ask a question. The statement is, it seems to me that a lot of these key performance indicators are a bit of a race to the bottom in the sense that they don't focus on quality of outcomes, but rather speed of outcomes or cost of outcomes. And I wondered whether there was any discussion, for example, in regulatory service, in the regulatory services area, about the relative merits of focusing only on statutory times or processing and not on quality of output.
Can I just, can I come to you, Bill, in a minute? But can I just respond to that to some extent? Because I was privy to the conversations within the mayoral forum that led to the formulation of these. And these are essentially benchmarks. And this was a first step in endeavouring to establish benchmarks across a number of local bodies. And the, one of the difficulties, and I wasn't involved with some of the later conversations, but one of the difficulties was finding benchmarks that weren't distorted by variables between councils. So to some extent, they're kind of dumbed down or oversimplified because it was felt that increasing levels of measuring became more problematic because of the different circumstances that different councils encountered. Now, that's as far as I'll go, that's my understanding. And this, in a sense, these are a first attempt to try and get some kind of benchmarks that we could say we can compare. I'm not arguing that they're perfect, but that's my understanding of why it took a while to form. Can I?
Wouldn't have much to add to that, your worship. We did start, the working group at least, that gave advice to the CEOs and the mayoral group. We did start with what we had and what we had in common, essentially. So we didn't start at what would be nice to have and what it would be nice to build. We looked at what data sources we actually had to work with in common, same methodology, comparable at an early point in time. But that's not to say the ambition to go further doesn't exist.
So I appreciate all of that and I appreciate that you've tried to do this with no budgetary impact, I imagine, which I endorse. However, it does strike me that things like rates per ratepayer as a percentage of regional median household income, by virtue of the very way in which we all do rates and the different facilities that we have in each of our communities and the different ownership of, say, companies to offset rates that we have in our various communities, amongst other things, that is going to be a very difficult thing. I mean, I can't see how we will be comparing apples with apples in that regard. And yeah, as such, I struggle to see the merits of pitting ourselves against each other in something which is just very difficult to actually get any kind of clarity on. Were discussions had about that?
Through the chair, discussions certainly were had about that particular one. There was a spectrum of views about the merits, with alternative benchmarks to that one and hence the other measure there. In thinking about affordability, some councils took the view that affordability issues were perhaps most critical for people on fixed and low incomes and therefore, in order to get some balance around the whole question of affordability, you needed more than one measure. You couldn't just rely on median income, for example. But it was also an exercise of, you know, six local authorities trying to come to an agreement, I guess. And because there was a spectrum of opinion, inevitably, things have sort of gravitated to the centre, if you like.
Yeah, well, your worship, I have to say, I mean, I can appreciate where this came from and the desire to support each other to get better outcomes, which I imagine is where this came from. But I think where it's ended up, I struggle to see the merits in something which basically could just be a stick to beat each other with, beat each other without any focus on quality of outcomes or, you know, if it included, for example... Sorry, I'm moving astray, you're right.
councillor Pete.
Thank you. Just a question of stuff about, I mean, I saw it, rather than a dumbing down, a kind of an indication of how we might pull together or work together, develop together, which is the words you're using in your report, and lifting standards or performance. And I wondered if that's the way you also saw it. And the second question was around, I was curious that it never seemed to fit. And this project didn't fit with any of our strategies, including Three Waters, which is presumably an asset management area, anyway. But I just wondered why they didn't tick any of those boxes.
Just on the first question, I... Increasing performance. Yeah, I mean, I guess that one thing to note is that everyone has said that their objective is collaboration, not competition. So that's as much as I can possibly say in response to that. As to the water, yeah, I mean, we do have, I think you have to remember that these are not the only performance measures that local authorities have in common to. We have the whole DIA mandatory performance measures and they do cover water and roading extensively. So we did try to not replicate that through this framework, again, if that helps.
Is the question about the considerations page, where we've put that it's not... Yeah, I think, I think we just felt that it's not contributing or detracting from the strategies, it's just measuring how we're performing. So it wasn't that it was going to deliver on any of the strategic goals embedded in the key strategies?
Okay, yeah, I suppose I just thought that maybe from this exercise that we would get best performance measures and therefore be able to improve based on other councils' performance.
Perhaps in answering that, we saw this as a means to that end.
Yeah.
Yep, but only a means.
Thank you. Two questions just about affordability. The average rates per ratepayer, just seeking assurance that by ratepayer, you're meaning the population of the city?
The methodology for that is based on an average level of rates?
Per ratepayer. And so I'm seeking clarification, I'm seeking assurance that the definition of ratepayer is citizen of the city?
Yes, as opposed to another city?
No, as opposed to people who receive a direct rates invoice in the post. So we have 120-something thousand people living here. Is that your definition of ratepayer?
Yes, or maybe the simpler, the answer in dollar terms is currently $1,750.
Look, I think this is an important question and I'm not sure. What the question is, is it householder or citizen?
Oh, the number of...
Rated household.
Yes, the number of ratepayers, not citizens.
The number of rated households.
Yes, that's right.
Not citizens, rated properties.
Yeah, so if it's ratepayers and rated properties, it's 45 or something thousand. Oh, there you go.
Yes. So would that not distort that metric? Because it's certainly, then you're essentially then saying that the 75 other thousand people aren't paying rates, when that's patently untrue. Because they just pay them, because they pay them indirectly, rather than paying them directly. Which means that your average rates per ratepayer will be far higher if you're only counting direct ratepayers, rather than the total population of the city.
Yeah, there's, well, it is common between us, but, and there were discussions...
Sorry, I missed that, sorry?
It was, well, the methodology is consistent between the councils, obviously. But we did recognise that some councils had a higher proportion of rental properties, for example, where there are not direct ratepayers. But the point was to compare the, am I not... Yes, indirectly, that's right. That was the argument that we...
Rental properties pay rates directly, the landlord pays the rates. You know, every rental, every ratable property pays rates. And so this is saying, here's a number of ratable properties in the city, the average is X.
Yes.
I don't mean to labour the point, but if you have 60,000 properties and they're owned by two people, that's two ratepayers, so your average rates... No, I'm saying if you've got 120,000, you've got 120,000 ratepayers. Everyone pays rates. The landlord's bigger. All right, I've got one other question.
Well, the kids don't, in any case.
Order, one more question, councillor Horgan.
And it's on the, it's the same metric. But I just wonder why we're benchmarking anything against a right-wing lobby group like the Taxpayers Union? How is that a valid...
So you can beat them at their own game, actually.
No, I just don't think, I just don't think that's, I mean, the figures aren't... I just don't know if that's a necessary inclusion.
Is your question about a right-wing lobby group?
No, my question is whether it's necessary for them to be named in the metric, actually.
I can certainly take that, I notice, and report that back to the working group and suggest that there might be an alternative way to express that.
Thanks.
Well, I can answer that to some extent. There was some commentary from the taxpayers' and rate payers' union that was completely misrepresenting the facts. And I know at a local government, New Zealand level, it was felt necessary to clarify the facts and put it out and probably, including them, was to rebut the mischievous misrepresentation. And it worked. Questions? Would someone like to move, it's for noting, move councillor Noon, second to councillor Calvert. Oh, did, sorry, you did too. Good on you. Would you like to speak to, oh, we haven't had a full discussion yet, would you like to speak to it?
No, thank you, I don't, so long as no one else wants to speak to it, I'll have a write a reply if anyone else is desperate to speak to it.
Okay, does anyone else want to speak? Staines.
I'm sorry, I will make my point very quickly, but it does concern me when we have a range of, when we were about to include in our documentation, our annual documentation, an assessment of indicators or a series of indicators which are so focused on cost and shortness of time of processing and similar fairly negative ways of construing councils' activity, rather than, or, and not including other more positive assessments which might include things like ease of access to a cultural facility or number of playgrounds available to every resident and similar. I mean, I know that they're very low level and I haven't thought about it very well, but I think that the problem that we have here is we're not focusing, we're focusing on costs rather than value and there is no balance in what we're assessing here, apart from perhaps the satisfaction measures, which I think are possibly a little bit difficult to put in the qualitative, sorry, quantitative camp in terms of assessment. So I would be much more comfortable if this range included some focus on value and I'm not sure that we're currently there. So I hope that the next iteration will place a bit more emphasis on the end of the equation. Thank you.
Councillor Staines.
Where do I start? Yes, I agree that the measures that are currently being proposed are probably cost-focused and probably comfortable to be measured. But before you can benchmark between different authorities, you have to have agreement to share information of this type. I sit on the polytechnic council. The council made a decision some eight years ago, I think, to take part in a gathering of, sharing of data. Chose to use tribal and English company, I think, originally, to consolidate that data. Some polytechnics did not take part, those that did have got a fantastic outcome. Why did some polytechnics not take part? Because they were too scared to share their data. I think here, starting to share some data, even albeit in the cost area, if that helps, and I disagree completely with the reasoning around not ticking contributes in more boxes, because at the end of the day, when you see data that is comparative and measured in the same way, and you see that you are different to the other authorities that are sharing this data, the first thing you do is ask the question, can I explain why I'm different? And if I can, is that because I'm doing something that my, that in the strategy I have, or this organisation has, that that difference is a positive difference? Or is it one where, in fact, we need to look closely at it and understand what we can do to do better? So I think you could tick contributes in every one of those boxes in that it's a fundamental tool of improvement. Polytechnic now, every year, that data is worth more, there's more points on the graph, we know where to look in our organisation for improvements. So I really do commend the mayoral forum for a start and the staff who've worked on this in getting to this step. I'm absolutely confident that when some data starts to be gathered and the territorial authorities who are in this start to see the benefit of the gathering that data, it will spread to measuring other things in the same way so that further improvement can be made. So I think rather than be here criticizing the first step, I think we should be applauding the first step and looking forward to the journey which will lead to excellence.
I'll just have a few words myself and then I'll come back to you as speaker. Can I say the context for this to some extent is that councils in this country traditionally have been absolutely scared stiff of benchmarking for years and they have resisted it and they've been scared of being compared, they've been scared of just identifying best practice for a very long time. And at a local government level, a local government, New Zealand level, it has been realised that if more sharing of data, as councillor Staines points out, and comparisons and best practice were identified, it can actually help to prevent some of the debacles that have occurred for some councils around the country, I'm not going to name them, but there are things that, that had those councils just been aware of what best practice was and the obligation to follow it, they wouldn't have got themselves in the shtuk that they did. So that, that is where benchmarking can take you. But I need to reiterate or emphasise what councillor Staines has said and what I said earlier, this is very much a first timid step and that's all it is. It's not a particularly adequate one at the moment because it is so limited, but it is limited because as, and I completely agree, measuring value and actually expressing value in terms of what councils around the country offer their communities is something that we really ought to be trying to do far more of. The whole value proposition with, with our communities is sorely lacking. But part of that is establishing best practice, establishing benchmarks and being able to compare yourself with, with other communities. So I commend this work, I think it's, as I say, a first timid step, but it is a step and it's a step in the right direction.
I agree that it is a first step and I don't think it's too useful to be hung up on the first step. It could be the first step would be everybody agreeing that we were having anniversary day on the same day. The thing is that it's a step towards some sort of commonality, some sort of mutual advantage by sharing information and sharing a sense of where we might be going to. And I hope that on a good day, as it develops and as people get less weary of sharing information, it will become more like what gardeners do, which is unashamedly poach any ideas they can find from anybody else, sometimes even little slips of whatever they're doing and replant them in your area. And when they see successful things happening, they look and say, how did you grow even a male lemon in your sort of climate? Come back to their organisation with, why don't you put a frost cover over on it for a wee while in the year and it'll make good lemons and make sure it gets watered. Whatever it is, I'm hoping that it will develop in that positive and helpful and organic fashion that gardeners do and also with a view to it being each of, the combination of all of us together being able to share information that makes the whole better than the sum of its parts, rather than using this for a competitive sort of approach. So I think it's a, it is a step towards an idea of sharing as much as we can and in the right hands and in the right direction and with the right positivity from people, it can go a huge direction to making our region work really well.
Thank you, I'm going to put it. All those in favour, please say aye. Against, carried. Thank you, Bill, thank you, Maria. Now, the next one on my list is the invest to save update, which is item, report 14. So, as usual, questions councillors? Doran, would someone like to move, it's for noting? Councillor McTavish.
Yeah, look, I'm trying to think how I can turn my rant into a series of questions and I'll try to, I'll try to ask one anyway. The, the savings that have been, have accrued and will accrue as a result of the 25,000 that was invested in, I forget what, Energy Link, is it, and the work that Energy Link did this year, they've basically just been taken as savings, is that right?
That's my understanding, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, I can't think of any other questions that I can ask to turn my rant into questions, so I'll just have to wait for debate, your worship.
Councillor Thompson.
The city civic centre, city library, is it still an invest to save option?
So the city library project has been completed?
No, that's what I meant. Yeah, the civic centre project, it's currently on hold as we negotiate an agreement with ECA. Their funding, their funding programmes have changed over the last year, so the funding that was available for the library wasn't available for the civic centre. They've now got a new programme which is available to the country's top 200 energy users and council was one of those, so we're just negotiating an agreement with them which will give us an account manager and give us some access to some funding and once that's in place, we'll progress that project or properly we'll progress that project.
So leaving it in there and carrying it forward makes sense because we may yet be able to make it work within the parameters that we originally envisaged?
I have, I have to be honest, I think that there's some, we're not sure on that. I wonder whether the, whether Grant Mackenzie might speak to that?
I currently do some cost, significant cost issues, the tenders that have come in are significantly over budget. So as Brendan said, we're trying to look at that shortfall being through ECA funding or actually getting better cost estimates from the supplier.
Right, so what I'm trying to understand is whether the revamp of the ECA arrangements is going to make the difference? And you don't know? But it would make sense to leave it there in the meantime because if, because it may do. But let's, but just if we weren't getting any external assistance, would this still be an invest to save option?
It would be invest to save with a very, very long payback.
All right, well, okay. The other, my other question is we've got 25,000 unexpended, I think, which we're carrying forward and the request for a further 50. Have we got anything identified as areas to work on?
First of all, the, the 25,000 that hasn't been spent to date won't be carried forward if there's no investigations carried out before the end of this financial year. We don't have any specific projects at the moment that we would say we definitely would spend that 50,000 on, but the intention of the budget really is to have a resource available when those projects and opportunities do arise so that we can progress those investigations at that time and with an ECA agreement in place, hopefully be in a position to, to use that.
Right, so, yeah, all right.
Councillor Calvert.
This is really a question for the resolution, can we make a resolution noting that with a, without telling our grandmother how to suck eggs or our chief executive how to go about her business, just a reminder that we've been listening to Dark Skies people and to factor those into, does that need to just, can that be part of something or, I mean, can, is it appropriate to make the resolution just noting that we've been aware that there may be some factors to take into account to do with Dark Skies and LEDs in general?
Yeah, I think that's a fair comment. We've noted that there is a potential project to investigate around the lighting at Logan Park, so that's through the Parks team. So I think people are thinking about the direction that you're taking and working through that in terms of coming up with ideas that they might want to look at.
Councillor Wilson. Councillor McTavish.
Your worship, I'm happy to move the recommendation. I've also got another couple of motions which I would like, well, I think I would like to move, I'd like to test the mood of the meeting on and hear others' feedback on and I'd like to speak to those. So...
The most efficient way would be to get them up on the board, on the wall and then, and move them. Perhaps in the first instance, the first feedback you need is a second. So if you could read out the resolutions, the proposed resolutions, and then if you get a second, then we'll go to the next stage.
I'm concerned I may not get a second without explaining them a little.
No, no, well, tries.
It's also possible. So the first would be simply that council notes the invest to save report or whatever the motion on the report is. The second would be that council requests staff report back on a more proactive, more proactive approach to identifying and investigating invest to save options with a particular focus on energy. And the third would be that we endorse a carry forward of the 25k current invest to save budget, should it not be expended in this financial year.
It's the most efficient way forward.
Thank you.
That way you can get them up on the wall and we can discuss them.
I haven't finished writing the third one.
Right.
So councillor Pete, we'll just, let's clarify questions here until we've got the...
There's a question about ECA, which has waxed and waned over 20 odd years with, it looks like it's, as you say, Brendan, it's going through another change period. I'm just trying to gauge whether you can, you can tell whether they're going to be more supportive of our, our kinds of invest to save energy projects or less supportive through this new collaboration agreement.
I think it's touched on in the report that ECA's essentially identified the top 200 energy consumers in New Zealand, we are one of them as a council. And so the idea is to get more direct attention from, from ECA. The other change to their approach, it seems to be that rather than wait for a, a potential supplier of a solution to, to approach us and say, by the way, we can, we can, we can, as being the supplier, get $10,000, for example, from ECA. ECA wants to make the money available directly to us. So it's a forecast, but I'd surmise from that that it's more likely that we'll get attention and potentially funding than it has been before. However, the total quantum hasn't changed, so it's really just the number of recipients, I suppose, has shrunk, but the total quantum hasn't changed, so I don't want to inflate expectations.
I have a question, Bill. If we're in the top 200 energy consumers in the country and assuming that we have an, we're developing an energy policy which focuses on saving, should our ambition be to get out of the top 200 energy users in the country? And if that's the case, are we not then in...
And if that's the case, are we not then in a position where we wouldn't get any assistance from ECA? And get, uh, punished for being, uh, for being successful? Would you like an answer?
Right, councillor McTavish.
Okay, oh, I'll endeavor to be brief. I apologize, my brain is starting to slowly shut down. Um, I, I have, um, firstly, I'd like to endorse the work that staff have done so far this year with that invest-to-save budget. I think, um, the report indicates that we'll be saving between twenty-one thousand dollars a year and fifty-something thousand dollars a year ongoing as a result of that work. And so clearly, the, um, uh, the invest-to-save option there was a, is a good one. So, um, this shouldn't be taken as a criticism of that work. I'm very supportive of that work. Um, what I am concerned about is that I think the current framework that we have around this budget is such that it really requires, um, staff to be stepping outside of their, uh, very absorbing day-to-day business and, uh, stepping into thinking which they're not actually necessarily qualified or trained in, in an area that they're not necessarily qualified or trained in. And, um, and actively and proactively coming up with proposals and then developing those proposals and then taking them to someone, I assume someone in the policy team or, or the chief executive. Um, and all of that is quite, it requires a lot of, um, energy on behalf of staff in different departments. And it's, I think it's asking quite a lot of those staff. Um, I think, uh, what we know of, of the invest-to-save work that we have done to date and the, the city, um, civic centre lighting may be an anomaly in this regard. But I think that generally speaking, where we have looked into invest-to-save options, they have delivered for us. And, um, that has a, an impact on, uh, the need to reach in future years. And I think that we should be much more aggressive in our approach to trying to, um, exploit all of the invest-to-save options that we have available to us. Um, I'd use the example of Toito in this year where it's not mentioned in the report, but there was an energy, um, assessment done to look at, uh, how and why we were spending quite as much energy in that area that, that we were, I think Miss Mackenzie led that work. And I think it delivered, um, uh, significant savings in that area. So... The, so the more that we can do in this area, I think the better. Um, at the moment, I think one of the problems that we do have is that the savings are absorbed. Therefore, we've just got this small budget which, um, and we, and we don't have anyone who's proactively going out there and saying, look, guys, these are places and I clearly identifying and investigating those areas. And that's not a criticism of the staff that we have in front of us. I know that you guys have, um, done as much as you can within your existing workloads. But I, I'm, I'm not sure that it is going to deliver the step changes that we would like to see in this area into the future. So as such, um, my request would be that we ask staff to look at whether or not there is a more proactive way that we can use this budget. Um, I've put in a particular focus on energy there because I think that this, that is where we found the greatest savings to date. And with the energy plan coming up, um, and I think a draft energy plan in there around being an, an energy leader, um, along with another, a number of other agencies, an emphasis on that area wouldn't go, um, amiss in the first instance. The second part endorsing a carryforward of the remaining seven, twenty-five thousand, the reason I've put this in is because I think, uh, having a seventy-five thousand dollar budget to consider what that more proactive approach might look like, um, would be worthwhile in the first instance. So it could be that that isn't spent, but I think it is worthwhile having that budget there so that staff have a bit more flexibility about the options that they could consider in terms of how, how a proactive, a more proactive approach might work. Um, I think that's all, your worship.
Speakers.
Um, okay, well, for my part, um, I, as I've, I've seconded this. Look, I, I think one of the ways of a more proactive approach to, um, identifying energy savings would be to allocate a portion of the savings that were identified as actually being made back into doing more investigation. And then, uh, as the team gets more dependent on that, that becomes their funding. And that, if they don't make savings, they don't get the funding. And I think that could work, it doesn't cost anyone anything. It actually incentivises saving. Um, so I think there probably are some ways we could, and I'm not suggesting we put that into the, uh, resolution, but I'm saying, I think there are probably some ways that will be cost-neutral to council, um, that we could look at in, into the future. So I, I support this. Councillor Hawke.
Follow on from, from, uh, what the mayor says. In the lighting upgrades, we spent three hundred thousand. We got a hundred thousand grant back, so it costs us two hundred thousand. And we've got a saving of, uh, fifty-nine and a half thousand a year. So would we not be better to carry the two hundred thousand and put the whole fifty-nine back in? And let that build up to, so we've got a couple hundred or three hundred thousand sitting there that we can start spending on other upgrades instead of drawing back on council. Put that totally into a fund. Yeah, but if we put the whole lot back in, brings up a bigger fund quicker.
Favor, please say aye. Against? Carried. Thank you.
Ten, which is community access to additional DVML venues.
Oh, it's, uh, it is, uh, report ten.
I've got a couple of questions. Um, I was wondering whether two hundred and fifty thousand rather than a hundred and fifty thousand would be appropriate because that's the amount that the stadium market is, at least theoretically, been, um, a community, you know, five thousand a week, two hundred and fifty thousand a year has been, um, the community benefit that the stadium has been providing to the stadium market, which is no longer operating. And so I'm wondering whether two fifty rather than one fifty is my first question. And the second part of the question is, um, I'd like to see some impact or something back on who would be able to use things. Does, does this mean that, for example, the, um, Fashion ID could be using the, the town hall as, as part of this, as a community event? How, how would that go about happening? Because I think it's a really great idea. I'm just trying to sort of get my head around quite how, how people would know and get the best out of it.
Um, so first question, the, the reason, um, the one fifty has been proposed is that's what has been requested by, um, DVML based on the calculations they've made. They, they feel that that is, that is the amount, the appropriate amount to allocate at this stage to the, um, to the town hall. Uh, so that, that's, that's the amount that, that has been put forward. Uh, the second, uh, part of that question, it, subject to the outcome of the decision from council today, we would then need to develop a new agreement with DVML about, about the, uh, the rules around how that money could be applied to events, what events would qualify, um, to receive those grants. And we haven't had those discussions with, um, DVML as yet. So that would need to be developed and, and approved.
So at the moment, have they got, do you know whether they've got any thoughts about what would be a two fifty shortfall of their community offerings? Or is, if we go ahead with this, is a one hundred thousand dollar shortfall of what the stadium is doing?
So that...
And for that seven fifty that they're getting at the moment?
So this proposal would see the, DVML have the ability to allocate one hundred and fifty thousand of that seven fifty to events taking place in the town hall. So they would still be allocating six hundred thousand dollars worth of value or community events, uh, to the stadium. So I'm not sure I quite understand the question. Sorry, Hillary.
Currently, a quarter of their seven fifty is being, was being used by the stadium market. So how are they intending to give another hundred thousand dollars benefit to the community? Free benefit to the community using the stadium?
Yep.
If they've proposed only one fifty of that?
Okay, sorry, I'm still, I'm still not quite trying to understand the question. So they, they have a, they run a process where they invite any community event who would like to use the stadium to apply, to hold that event in the stadium? And then those, uh, those that are successful, um, have a value allocated depending on the type of use? And that comes off the seven fifty? So the two hundred and fifty that may have been used by the market could now be absorbed by other events applying to the stadium?
Whether they had any plans about what they might be?
Uh, no, they've just, uh, they've gone, been through one, uh, round of, um, applications and I'm not sure what the outcome was.
Councillor Calvert, I think I can clarify something. They, the DVML is not under an obligation to spend the whole seven fifty. So the impetus doesn't come from them to, on to groups, it's on application. So at the end of the year, I'm not sure whether they carry it over or not, but they, no, they don't. So they may not actually use it all anyway. So it's not like they have an obligation to allocate it to certain areas.
No, sort of, but they've asked us for that. We give them that amount of money for community use of the stadium. So I presume if... No, currently we give them seven hundred and fifty thousand for commu... So we would just not give that, that shortfall would stay in our hands.
No, so, so what, the, the seven fifty will remain. That, that, that is what they currently receive. And the only question here is at the moment, they are not allowed to allocate it to events other than at the stadium.
Appreciate that, but I don't think that's the question. The question is, if they don't get applications for the whole seven fifty, what happens to the remainder?
Well, yeah, no, we don't. It would come, it would come back.
We pay it to them anyway, don't we?
Okay, correct. At this time, we pay it to them. But it would depend on the conditions of the service level agreement whether we actually have to or not. So...
Does that mean that up till now, they have utilized it all?
Yeah, correct. And councillor Calvert's point is very valid about it being, um, dominated by one particular event.
Yeah, no, I got that.
But, but I, I guess the issue that what they've done here is that they've actually looked at, at the other way around. They said, actually, how much, uh, do they need for the Dunedin Centre? Rather than we're losing that, well, they might be losing that, um, market. Therefore, they need to plug it. It's been the other way around.
So we could change the service level agreement, asking them for whether they actually need? A proposal as to, as to where, what, what they would do with the other hundred thousand that we're currently funding? Are there other community groups who would want to use the stadium? For us to need to be, give them the money for the stadium?
Yes, and that's why, as Richard talked about, they have the process where they actually call for applications for people to actually come and use it. And we're fair to say that the, the use of the stadium is increasing, which is, community use of it's been increasing, which means that, uh, those funds have been used.
Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, your worship. Um, I could be missing something here. But currently, there's a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars allocated to community use of the stadium. Um, but there's also, and this is where I'm guessing the hundred and fifty figure is coming from, uh, an informal arrangement that has existed since the DVML takeover of the Dunedin Centre where they are paying a hundred and forty-one, a hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars for community use. Um, so in essence, is the total quantum of funding for community use of city venues being reduced through this proposal from eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year, as it is currently, seven fifty formally through the stadium and one forty informally through the town hall, to seven hundred and fifty thousand, um, of which one hundred and fifty thousand will be through the town hall? So it's a, it is a reduction in community access to city venues?
Uh, the, the hundred and forty thousand identified by, in the, and I'll shoot you the figures in the memo from DVML.
Uh, just in the discussion of the report.
Yep. So that, that is effectively, um, just subsidies they have been providing to ensure there has been access for groups to the town hall venues. But they don't recover that through our current community access fund. So it is, uh, it's essentially something that DVML have been doing to ensure since that change, those groups have been, uh, being able to access the Dunedin Centre venues. But they haven't, they haven't had any formal arrangement to recover that.
So to maintain the current level of community, uh, access across the board, we should, we would need to be allocating a budget of nine hundred thousand dollars?
Um, if, if I may, not the, if, if we think about it the other way around. So the same level of community access will still be available. But what we will be doing is we will be able to, so DVML will be able to program the spaces at a more commercially viable rate by ensuring that the community groups are in the spaces that are most appropriate to them. So we will actually, there'll be the same amount of community access, but there will be a reduced loss for DVML associated with accommodating those community groups.
I don't think I follow that logic because, I mean, I don't see how that can be possible if the overall quantum is being reduced as dramatically as it is, bearing in mind that one of those benefactors was the stadium market that no longer exists. Um, but if demand, beneficiary, rather, it's a long day. Um, how, how, how this can be, uh, maintaining that level of access if the quantum is being reduced fairly significantly?
Yeah, uh, look, Erin, I, I, I think your calculation is, as I read it, would be, would be correct. So currently, as a, an unofficial approach from DVML to ensure those, that there is that access provided, they are, they are providing that additional, or their calculation, a hundred and forty thousand. They believe, um, that they can still, um, provide the appropriate community access to both the stadium and the Dunedin Centre for, for seven hundred and fifty, which is why the request comes through, not to increase the overall value.
Would it be fair to say that the existing beneficiaries of that subsidy are the, are the ones that existed pre-two thousand and eleven? So it was just sort of a, a rolling over in a less formal arrangement of what already existed. And it hasn't been necessarily advertised as, as something that is available to groups that weren't using it pre-two thousand and eleven. And if this, under this proposal, you will either be, I mean, and that's fine, to cutting access to those existing groups or not allowing new groups to use that? So you...
So I can probably help with that a little.
Thanks.
The situation before the, um, revamp of the town hall and before DVML took over was, as I understand it, and it was exactly before my time, was up till then, there was a kind of a mayoral prerogative where he or she could waive the, some of the fees for the town hall hire for community groups. They saw me coming and canned it. But, no, what happened was clearly, once DVML took over, um, that wasn't appropriate. But I'd have to say, there have been a number of occasions where I have approached DVML at the request of community groups wishing to use the town hall and made an informal request that they consider giving them a discount. And it would appear that some of that would be reflected in a hundred and forty-odd thousand, which is effectively their, they swallow that, that's their loss. So I don't see you can add it on to the seven fifty personally, but that's the history of it anyway.
Can I just, um, seek some clarification, Ruth? What I think I understood you to be saying, but I'm not necessarily sure whether this is what other people heard, is that, um, the, across the totality of the spaces that Dunedin Venues Management Limited have available, there is the, under this arrangement, there would be the ability for, and I'm making this bit up now, but a, a group is using a space that gets charged out at four hundred dollars. They could put them in a space that gets charged out at two hundred dollars. Um, in other words, they could re... Um, in other words, they could re, they, they would have greater flexibility to arrange what, what spaces groups were using so that they could get a, they could get more bang for the, for the same buck, because that's what I thought you to be saying, is that right?
Yes, yes councillor, you've said it far more eloquently than I have after this particularly long day.
I just wanted to clarify, because I'm not sure that's, that's what was heard, that was all, so, yeah.
Is it then a position then that it has two benefits for DVML? One of them is that they're more flexible about how they allocate some of their community groups. And the second of them is that effectively the seven fifty that we expect them to give value to the community from the stadium from now on will be six hundred. They will still just be using a hundred and fifty thousand worth of, they were giving them away and weren't getting any value from them. Now, we're not holding them to account for a hundred and fifty of the seven fifty. So now we're expecting them to give seven, six hundred at the stadium and the hundred and fifty that, we didn't know they were giving, but they were giving away anyway. So they get two advantages. We hold against them six hundred community at the stadium and the hundred and fifty thousand that we were doing before. Infor-, they were doing before informally, they can spread around a bit differently, so. The community isn't any better off, but that's the two effects. Although they have a more appropriate space possibly, but the two effects on DVML are that they can rearrange some community space and that only six hundred thousand is held against some community use of the stadium.
Yes, and, and what I would add to that is some community groups who were applying to the stadium to hold their event, they're trying to get some benefit out of that fund, but would be better suited to hosting their event. And the Dunedin Centre can now do so, and they can work with DVML to, to find the best space for their event.
And, under those circumstances, why wouldn't we be leaving it open to DVML? And just saying, here's seven hundred and fifty, you allocate it where you see fit? Well, why are we saying a hundred and fifty to here and six hundred and fifty, uh, six hundred to there? Why don't we just leave it across the board for the CEO of Dunedin Venues to manage where he sees fit?
Yeah, that's a, so it's certainly an option available to, to council. The, the reason for, um, the, the approach taken by DVML is recognizing the initial purpose of that grant, which was to encourage, uh, community participation and, and connection to the stadium. So they, they wanted to, I guess, keep that as the, as the key reason for that fund. However, that option of making it open to, um, the DVML CEOs is there for council, should they choose to.
Well, if we are saying to our CEO down there that, you know, we think he's doing a good job, um, shouldn't we be putting a hand up and saying, well, here's up to you to allocate the money where you see fit? And to the best advantage to the community?
Um, we've got a couple of options. We can, um, approve this one and go back to them and say, do you want to consider another one? Or we can can this and, and have a totally different, um, um, I'm not sure who moved this yet, but, um, councillor Thompson?
I, I, I would be quite supportive of what councillor Hall is suggesting. Um, it seems to me that what we're actually about is community access to council facilities. And I just think, uh, the maximum flexibility, um, would, would be sensible. We have them now managing all those facilities. So, um, I, I, we've got a, we've, we've got a motion up there, so, and this is incompatible with the motion. So the motion would have to be withdrawn to be replaced, but I would certainly, um, support it.
Okay, so here's, I've had at most an indication from councillor McTavish that she has framed this up and wants to move it. Um, so in the first instance, I need to come back to councillor McTavish and ask what your intentions would be in that regard.
I'm, I'm comfortable, I mean, when I first read the report, I wondered why we'd put such a ring around it. Um, and I would take advice from staff on whether there was reasoning behind that. I do note that this is one of those cases of law of unintended consequences. And it was pointed out to me that, um, there are a number of organizations that, um, may in the past have, or may not in the past have accessed the town hall, that may have used, say, the Regent or any number of other, um, facilities in Dunedin, which probably rely on their business. Um, if they were able now to access the town hall and all of its facilities for free or at limited cost, then we may indeed be, uh, uh, having an impact on their bottom line in a way that we may not intend to do so. So, uh, that would be my concern with that approach. I guess, having thought that through as I speak about it, um, I would probably stick with this in year one. We can monitor the impact, we can look at the, uh, the, um, the, the, the different sets of users and the demand and any perhaps unintended consequences of this move. And then perhaps in year two, reevaluate. I do know that this is reported, the use of this fund is reported back to council every year. So we would have the opportunity to, um, examine that.
Okay, look, my suggestion on this is that this is not, this does not have a budgetary impact. So it, we, we could come back in the next council meeting, for instance, and change this. So my suggestion is, we, we note this has, has been requested by staff, but we seek, uh, because I think councillor Hall's suggestion has, makes a lot of sense, but we just seek some feedback from the CEO, both our CEO and from the CEO of DVML. And then it, we can change it at any time. Councillor, um, Mr Mackenzie?
I, I must say, I don't like being called Mr Mackenzie, I always think that's my father. But anyway, as an aside, um,
Lovely chap.
We have, um, th- there's a memo from Terry basically saying that he's happy with the one fifty. Uh, it'd be fair to say that, uh, around the executive leadership team, we had the same conversation. And the reason that we're happy with the one fifty and the six hundred split was to make sure that we was trying to, um, ensure that we had the, the right mix between the two venues. The worst thing that could have, have happened is you'd actually then find five years down the track, new CEO, they're spending seven hundred and fifty at either one vent or the other, or venue or the other, and which is what we're trying to avoid happening. It's trying to get that whole community use of all the facilities.
Oh, come, oh, we'll come, well, do you have a suggestion here?
Just a, a question. I'm presuming we're going to keep some tag, even although we're putting them into one company, of the stadium activities and finances and operations, so as that we can separate them out. Because if so, it may make a difference. Currently, we're giving the stadium's activities a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar income. So if we, we're reducing it, I, I mean, if we change that, it might take that out of their book, their official books and loo-, look like they're not meeting their budgets, that's all I'm...
Um, one more question from councillor Hawkins, and then I think this, the, the rest of this discussion is best held under the, um, ages of, of a, the resolution, but councillor Hawkins?
Yeah, thank you. Um, just, and I'm, and I'm aware that the use, the stadium use has been reported back to council, but I'm not sure that the use of the Dunedin Centre that's mentioned in the report is. And while I'm, because while I'm s- still skeptical that it can, all of that be done for this quantum, we'll never know if we can't compare, um, the usage for this coming year with the usage from this year. So is it possible to get that information so those comparisons can be made?
Uh, we, we could request that. The reason it's not reported on is, is because it's not part of any, um, service level as, so the, the service level currently for the community access to the stadium requires them to report back.
Hmm.
Uh, the, uh, the money that's being applied or that is sent out in the memo, the hundred and forty thousand is, is their calculations through subsidies and free equipment hire. They have provided to groups within the town hall, but is not reported back on. It's just an internal...
For them to have come to that, they must have...
They have, have calculated it through their own figures, but we, we don't have that.
I'm sure that it's part of any new agreement, that we can ask for some historical information so we can get some comparisons.
That'd be great, thank you.
Okay, now, um, I take it you're moving this, councillor McTavish? Is there a second? Councillor Pete? Okay. Would you like to speak to it?
I'm just aware that I haven't spoken to the second part of this motion, um, which isn't on the order paper. Um, this is in discussion with, uh, the chief executive and, um, uh, Rebecca Williams, who's not here. Um, but, uh, there are, the, the existing SLA, the qualifying criteria are relevant and specific to stadium use, um, and organizations that might want to use that space. It's thought that, given that we have a new twenty fifteen grants policy and the, the use and the types of activities that might exist and might be used in that town hall are probably different and, um, different mix of qualifying criteria that might need to be, um, considered. Uh, that the SLA might need to be revisited, um, because the reason, for reasons of timing, um, uh, the, the, the chief exec, um, requested that, uh, it be approved by her, um, rather than coming all the way back to council. Um, and so that is what, uh, B is about. Anything to add, Richard?
Okay. Is there, are there any other speakers? Councillor Pete?
Yeah, I'm just, um, it's kind of a question, but a more a comment, I guess. That I presume that, that, uh, and considering what proportion of the seven hundred and fifty thousand could be applied to events in the Dunedin Centre, that, that decision at one hundred and fifty thousand was made based on kind of a feel for the proportion of events that they were losing revenue on. And I think, because they did have lost some revenue because of, uh, the subsidies. Uh, and, 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 uh, would that be a fair assumption? Yeah, so I, I'm happy to support it on the space and, and keep an open mind as to, uh, that, that quantum, or how that could vary in, in the future.
Okay. Note for the speakers? I'm going to put it, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Thank you, Richard. On my list is Warm Dunedin, which is the, uh, sixteen. Thank you. Sorry. Fees and charges. Which one's that? Nineteen, okay. Right, um, questions of, um, grant? Questions, councillors? Any questions? I'm having a move. Second councillor McTavish? Uh, is there any discussion? I'm putting all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried.
I, I think we might make a recommendation that Jane write all the reports from now on.
Just bring it up on our screens. Right, if there are, if there are no, if there are no questions or they're blank, then they can, they can not make moves. I'm assuming the scheme, this is still cash neutral to individuals, isn't it? It's, or it's neutral to council, but
Correct.
it should cover ninety-nine percent of that award.
There will be, yes, basically.
So is there any reason why we wouldn't continue it? I just can't remember all the details of it. I have read it and I just can't remember. I made some notes and I've scribbled all that.
So the, the issue you've got is around, uh, the, um, impact on debt levels for the city?
Yeah.
So if, um, there's, there's three options. One is discontinue, therefore, um, we've got an underspend from prior years because we're expecting more to be taken up.
Yeah.
Uh, the second one is, recommendation is that you use that, carry for that underspend?
Yeah.
Or the third one is you actually try and grow the scheme, so, yeah.
Well, well, I do have a question, but I, I'll preface it with a statement, which is, um, that we should be continuing the program and that any debt related to that program should sit outside of the debt, um, strategy, because it's different, it's different debt. Yeah. Um, and, uh, but I'm slightly, um, so therefore, my, I would, my inclination is to move option three A, except option three A doesn't really define anything. So, um, what I would, uh, so I'm, I'm, uh, o- o- option two i- is fine if, um, we think that that would be enough to get us through the year based on current patterns. So my question is, do you think that's enough to get us through the year on current patterns?
It, it, it's always a forecast, so, so caveat heavily, but yes, the maths suggest that it will be enough. We, we wouldn't be expecting more than another three hundred in the year, at, at current rates.
So if that's the case, then I, I would move option two. Are you? Very good. Carry on.
Someone agrees.
Speak or against?
It's just a simple clar-, I think it's simple, clarification, um, and it's to do with the, uh, the rate payer definition. Um, again, uh, rate payer equals household, does it?
Yes.
So we, we're not counting two rate payers in one, uh, in one house.
Seven hundred and seventy-two households.
It's what?
That, so the number of approved applicants is per household.
Household, yeah, thank you.
Well, is there any discussion on this? It's been moved and secreted, is there any discussion? I'll put it, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Against, carried. Right, give them another table to something, councillors. Who aren't here, that we won't head into Atatoy or Tipoti tonight. And I see that some, still some cycleway stuff, these are reasonably chunky. Uh, and I don't think it'd be prudent to launch into them in our state of tiredness anyway. But I notice there's another one here, um, sycamore trees. There was a submission regarding it, and it's on my list, Jane, and we, we, was there a... Um, hold on, please.
We should, just, sorry, I'm just seeking clarification in relation to the cycle stuff. I don't think that those are reports. I think that that was just a title.
Ah.
Is that not, is that right, Jane?
Um, we need to come back to the options that we've discussed.
Is it all units?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
that work and should there be other areas where this particular approach could be applied, then that could be rolled out.
Yes, I'm, sorry, with my limited understanding, from what I do understand is that similarly with community gardens and other things that we talked about earlier, is that the staff are looking at how we can much better leverage the community groups that are there so that we can actually, obviously, there's a huge resource that's available to us, and we acknowledge we haven't performed as well as we can in working with those groups, so there's a real focus on that at the moment.
And, sorry, so unclear, that's a, that will include other agents, other landowning agencies in that area? Kiwirau, NZTA, et cetera?
In relation to the sycamores in particular?
Yeah.
Or in general?
No, in relation to the sycamore management issue, the pilot that we're speaking about.
I'll get some more detail about that and come back to you, it's probably the best thing to do.
Cool, thank you.
So the question from me is, is there a need to move anything with regard to this or not at the moment? That's just in terms of process, right, that's good. So... Some guidance from the meeting on this one. The memo that you've been given is from Mr McKenzie, and it came at the request of a council resolution around the South Dunedin Community Complex possibilities. This indicates, as far as it can, in the short timeframe available, that it would be difficult to make that building work. I'm also conscious, however, that councillor Benson-Pope, who initiated the resolution in the first place, is not here and had suggested a resolution to this, but I take comment in the meantime. Councillor Staines?
Just a question and clarification. When you refer to the first floor, is that the ground floor or the floor above it?
Floor above.
So would, is the area big enough that if we had a library in it which requires the strength for books, why would you want to put that on the first floor rather than the ground floor?
Because the majority of the vacant space in the building is on the first floor.
Okay, so it's a fact that it is already tenanted?
Correct.
Councillor Hawkins, do you have a question? Well, just, I mean, it's a process thing, I guess, to save ourselves asking and listening to the answers to these questions tomorrow, as they will no doubt be raised by the absent councillor. I wonder if it's better not to deal with this tomorrow?
You mean not today?
I mean tomorrow.
Yes, tomor, yeah.
Look, I'm, I think that's probably the most equitable way of dealing with it. Now, I've got a copy of the motion that councillor Benson-Pope was going to put, and that is, I'll read it out, that staff report further on the practicality and cost of locating the South Dunedin Library Complex in the South City Mall. So I guess that's the question that will be resolved tomorrow. On the face of it, I'd have to say, though, that the initial report we've got would not give me grounds to go and report again. So another option is, in light of that, councillor Benson-Pope has not had this memo, so he isn't, when he suggested this motion, he didn't have the benefit of the information in the report. And were he to do so, he probably would withdraw that, but all in all, I think it's probably better to wait till tomorrow.
Can I say something? I did give David a bit of a heads up that there were a number of issues with the building. The issue that we do have is that this is very, very preliminary. Having conversations with the owner of the building is interesting. They're not particularly interested at times in talking to us, so these are very, very preliminary, and it could, it would still be, it would still come into the consideration if you go with the original process that was planned, which was that wider community engagement, because it is still a potential site.
All right, look, let's leave that till tomorrow.
So I think we'll call the meeting to a halt now. If anyone has got any comments or...
I've got a situation, I need to be in Namaroo for a meeting tomorrow afternoon, and I would have to leave late morning. So is that something that you can excuse, or do I have to cancel my meeting in Namaroo?
We will by then, in my view...